Good morning, this is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for March 3rd, 2020. We'll begin with the appeals calendar. Item #1, 201830A, 40 Flapish Avenue, Brooklyn.
This is being postponed, right?
To April 21st, 2020. Item #2, 2019281A, 965 Richmond Avenue, Staten Island.
Please come forward, sign in, and do your presentation. Please state your name for the record, and then give me your presentation.
Good morning. My name is Christopher Fisher. I'm a partner with the firm of Cuddy &amp; Fader. I'm here on behalf of the appellant, New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, which is known to the public in terms of wireless services as AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T is a national provider of wireless communication services. They have all the requisite licenses and approvals from the FCC and the state to do business in the state of New York, and they provide wireless services. Wireless services today encompass a number of different types of services that the consumer and public enjoy. Those include cellular telephone, texting, mobile broadband, and more recently, for AT&amp;T's purposes, first net public safety communications. In the state of New York, AT&amp;T, when it applies for zoning approvals, is considered a public utility in the services it provides, or public utility services. We're happy to be here this morning and talk about one particular issue that's been raised with the DOB, and I would be remiss if I didn't say, we've really collaborated over the years and currently with both the administration, DOT, DOB, and other agencies on our network infrastructure and how to consistently provide reliable services to the community and address the potential impacts of infrastructure we built to provide those services. The issue on appeal really is straightforward, and I was here yesterday listening in to the executive session, and I think the chair accurately captured the issue. The question is one of use. The question here is whether or not a cellular tower facility in a commercial and manufacturing zone is classified as a public service establishment, communication structure, or whether or not, pursuant to the DOB's recent determination, it should be classified as a radio or TV broadcast tower. When you look at the actual zoning resolution, these are two separate and distinct uses. On the particular scope of this appeal, I have a couple of introductory remarks. What I think from listening to yesterday's conversation I should do is take you through some of the chronological history, because there is a lot of legislative, regulatory, and legal history associated with this appeal, and talk a little bit about the particular project itself, go into some of the legal analysis and policy considerations, and then certainly be in a position to answer questions that you have related to the appeal. On the scope of the appeal, I think just to focus the board more particularly on some of the questions we have had with DOB is relates to the TPPN, particularly #5-98, as adopted in 1998, and what we see as a departure in this past year and a half period of time from what was announced in the TPPN, that these services, cellular services provided by AT&amp;T and a few other carriers, are public utility services, and that they should be afforded such classification when we look at the actual zoning resolution. We also want to point out that this position we're taking before the board this morning and on this appeal does not impact how DOB might classify towers in residential zones. In fact, towers in residential zones, whether they're Use Group 6D or radio towers, are special permit uses. That's something that the BSC has seen several applications on in the past in residential The one thing we would also want to point out just on this appeal, this is really a question that you're being asked now on the prospective application of these use classifications on a tower facility, whether or not it will continue to be Use Classification 6D or this new determination by DOB, radio tower. One thing that is an issue, that is not before the BSA, but I would be remiss if I didn't point out, this new change in position at DOB has raised an issue of retroactive application to existing towers that were permitted in commercial and manufacturing zones, and we have a pending ZRD-1 request into Technical Affairs to address those issues. We're looking forward to working with the DOB to try to come up with a process, at least as it relates to their most recent determination. So this appeal is prospective on new towers and how they might be classified in commercial and manufacturing zones. I'm going to start in terms of the history back with the 1961 comprehensive zoning amendments that were adopted by the Planning Commission. At that time, two particular uses that I described were adopted by the Planning Commission. If you look at the actual zoning resolution, there's a whole number of uses that are Use Group 6D and in the kind of generic classification. These are public service establishments, and just generically, I would classify them as your typical utilities: electric distribution and generation plants, sewer and water treatment facilities, telephone exchanges, communication structures, and the like. In 1961, the Planning Commission also adopted a separate use classification for radio or TV tower. One thing we would highlight here is that there's no dispute between DOB and the appellant that the monopole at issue in this appeal is a structure. It is and could be considered certainly a tower. It is for communications purposes. The real question, if we're looking at use, is whether or not it's classified as public utility under 6D or radio or TV, which is something else. One of the things, and I'll just briefly give you some context, I had some photo boards prepared, just to give you a sense of what I think at least, while you look at the legislative history, it's not particularly illuminating in 1961 as it relates to the issues on this appeal, but these are some of the things I think certainly the Planning Commission, just from a layperson's point of view, would look at and say as a radio or a TV tower. These happen to be at-grade lattice-type structures, several of them in a larger area and footprint, that's FM radio. This happens to be a site that the BSA issued a special permit for. This is Fordham's radio tower on top of the building in the Bronx. This was actually, and that was a somewhat controversial application at the time, but this was, the predecessor was an accessory tower facility that was permitted by right as a radio tower by Fordham near the Botanical Garden. And then just the last example, here's another radio-TV type tower, a large lattice structure, either at-grade or on the roof of a building. There are other examples we have in the record. Common examples would be some of the transmitting facilities on top of Freedom Tower, Empire State, those types of large broadcasting facilities. So one of the things I would point out, which is not surprising as to why the legislative history is not particularly helpful, at least in 1961, on the question before you now, is it was another 20 years before cellular communications as a service was even really conceptualized and commercialized. So at the time, when the Planning Commission was dealing with this, cellular service really hadn't even been invented yet. One other amendment that we saw in the legislative history that I would point out, and I think it was referenced by both us and the Department of Buildings, in the 1970s, there were two amendments to the section involving Use Group 6D, and in particular, the actually line item that is the use that we've referenced here. I would say, though, that what the Planning Commission was focused on is the first half, telephone exchange. Nothing in the 1971 amendments really implicated what the meaning of other communication structure was. What the Planning Commission was dealing with at that time, which is not surprising in the '70s as waterline communications were still burgeoning, the local landline companies, which in this case is commonly known as Verizon, they were looking at issues with the footprint of buildings, floor-to-floor height, and area issues for their own equipment and technology, and they came before the Planning Commission, said, "We really think some amendments, really for bulk and area purposes, are necessary for us to be able to effectively build out infrastructure to serve the public." But nothing that certainly I saw in the '70 or '71 amendments addressed other communications equipment structures, the second part of that use classification. So it's another 15 years before you get to the 1980s, when you start to see cellular commercial services being provided. At the time, to give you some context, the FCC licensed two carriers. It was a duopoly, Verizon, and the predecessor, AT&amp;T, which was at the time Cellular Telephone Company. The frequencies which were used were re-provisioned by the FCC for this particular service, without getting into too much detail of the technology, it's kind of a honeycomb reuse of wireless frequencies where you need multiple transmitting locations to build a network to provide the service. For all practical purposes, both at the time as contemplated and today, you build out a robust transmitting network architecture that has a wireless component, is the connection to the user. The tower or the rooftop facility is hardwired into the actual network itself and back to a switch. In the city of New York in the '80s, by and large, most all of these installations were just simply antennas being mounted on the roofs of buildings. These were not structures that were either mounted on the roof of a building or at-grade, and with respect to the regulatory environment, this was something the DOB routinely looked at as just ancillary, incidental, nothing that even would trigger a use classification, something that the zoning resolution would implicate. So they looked at it not necessarily as a use question, just simply as it's like water tanks or HVAC equipment or anything else on the roof of a building, it's a public utility service, as long as you go through a DOB work permit process or FDNY or other administrative rules, it's not a zoning matter that's something that's subject to a more discretionary review process. When we get to the early '90s, this is where you see some of the development of cellular infrastructure, and in the city of New York, we were simply going through the process, things were moving along, I don't think there were really any issues for our industry. But in other jurisdictions, and some of what you alluded to yesterday and you saw in our filings, you started to see this question of use and whether or not antennas on buildings, antennas on water tanks, new towers to support these types of transmitting facilities, how they might be classified. And one of the cases that we cited, which was the Court of Appeals case in Rosenberg, which actually is the predecessor to AT&amp;T as the plaintiff, the question of use came up, and the Court of Appeals held that these are public utility services, the services are something that are essentially the equivalent of wireline telephony, and that is wireless, and that we need to build out network infrastructure for that purpose. And so what the court was really dealing with, while the facts were related to a prohibition in a particular community, the court was really looking at it and saying, "Okay, in the absence of some cellular wireless regulation that's really specific and been legislated for this use, how are we going to classify this? Well, it's clearly a public utility facility." In fact, the court used the word "public utility" building. It's something that should be classified as such, and even if it's in a zone that's prohibited, there's a lesser standard of review on a use variance. So that is actually a seminal case in the state of New York for our industry. It really set the stage going forward as far as how our infrastructure would be treated. When you get to the, and in looking back in terms of comparing that to legislative history, I find that the Court of Appeals case is somewhat even better than legislative history. It looks at a situation statewide and says, "This is how, for zoning purposes, this use should be classified in the absence of very specific cellular wireless regulations." Fast forward a couple of years to 1998, this is when the city, actually really for the first time, I think in a comprehensive way, said, "We've got to look at how we're regulating wireless facilities citywide." And this is where you get to TPPN 598 that I referenced. One of the things that DOB was looking at, and at that time, was the prevalence of these antenna installations, not new structures, not towers, just antenna installations on residential or commercial rooftops throughout the city. And the city in DOB, they looked at this, and they, in fact, if you read through the TPPN, which we included, they specifically referenced that we are a utility service that has become prevalent, and it's an essential service for the benefit of constituents and consumers in the city of New York. And in doing so, they essentially ratified a position that they'd taken and formally adopted TPPN 598 to say that antennas installed on buildings, they're exempt from zoning. We're not even going to classify them, they're not a use per se, this is something that falls outside of the zoning resolution altogether. And that particular determination, some years later, was the subject of a BSA appeal by someone trying to suggest it should be, a specific rooftop should be specially permitted. The BSA upheld the DOB's TPPN and said, "No, as long as they meet these very finite dimensional requirements, six feet off the roof, 400 square feet of equipment, these are exempt from the actual zoning resolution." The question, though, is-
I just need to correct that. That's not what the BSA was asked to look at on that case. The BSA was asked to look at whether DOB had the authority to issue that TPPN, and held that it did. It didn't conclude that the DOB's restrictions or analysis was correct. It concluded that DOB had the authority to issue such TPPNs. It's a big difference. It wasn't an interpretive appeal on the meaning of cellular antenna or the uses.
We agree. This is the first time this type of issue is before you. I cited simply to say that in identifying where the line was drawn by DOB, and at least for purposes of the jurisdictional analysis. So the question under the DOB's TPPN, and at the time, was, "Okay, when we build facilities as an industry that are not these antennas on rooftops, what use classification are they? Where do they fall under the zoning resolution, and how will they be regulated?" The TPPN specifically references Use Group 6D and uses the language "other communication structure," and talks about how, particularly in a residential zone, any of those types of facilities, rooftop or towers, may require a special permit, and in fact cites a section of the zoning resolution that's still in force today, where if you go and look at, you'll see Use Group 6D, telephone exchange, or other communications equipment structure, and then if you drop down a little further, you'll see radio or TV tower, non-accessory. So at the time in 1998, both those uses were something that was aware and in the knowledge of DOB, but DOB did not say these uses would somehow be classified as radio or TV towers. They said, "They're Use Group 6D." One of the things that-
Sorry.
Can you go back?
Yes.
Can you go back and just rephrase?
Say that louder?
Yes.
Can you just state that again? I got lost in the-
Sure. So the TPPN in 598, when you actually go through and you look at what, its purpose was the zoning exemption, but when you look at what the DOB specifically wrote in it, they said, "When a facility does not meet this TPPN, the six-foot antenna height on the roof of a building," they said it is a Use Group 6D, other communication structure, and it may require a special permit in a residential zoning district. And it cited Section 22-21 of the zoning resolution. And when I go to 22-21 of the zoning resolution, that's where you'll see these two uses, Use Group 6D or radio tower that we're talking about today, and my-
Sorry, that's the part where I thought radio and tow, radio towers are not a listed use. Isn't that only exists in the section-
70.
70, whatever it is.
It is-
Yeah, it's-
7300.
Yeah, there's no-
It's a list, yeah, it's 7330, thank you, where it just says, "Special permits can be issued," and it's also listed in 3231, which is uses permitted by special permit. Radio and television towers are not a listed use. That's part of the point, right? If they exist, by definition, they always need a special permit.
Yes, and so when I look at 323031, I look at 2221, the question is, are, here, when we get to it, whether or not this facility is more properly classified as Use Group 6D communication structure or radio tower that requires a special permit. I don't believe that the intention was to say that a radio tower is not a separate use from a communications equipment structure, and that simply what DOB has done is merged the two.
Sorry, now I'm lost again. So the Use Group 6D lists certain public service establishments, courthouses, interesting concept of a public service, because you could say a library, there's firehouses, right? Electric gas utilities, substations, fire police stations, public utility stations for oil or gas metering, solar energy systems, telephone exchanges, or other communications equipment structures, with a lot of caveats about how big they're allowed to be, and that's all. And radio and television towers are not listed in any of the use groups, right? So it's not a question of which use group is it. Radio and television towers are not a use group, so if it's one of those, then it has to have a special permit.
If it is a radio or TV tower, yes, it would have to have a special permit.
Okay.
And so coming back to cellular facilities and Use Group 6D, right after the TPPN was issued, there were a number of different clarifications that were sought by our industry. One in particular was this question of classifying a monopole, a monopole or communications tower, and whether or not it would be permitted. Now, this is a 1998 letter, so the quality is a little bit rough.
No, but we can't see it at all.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know about your eye doctor, but mine doesn't.
I've got the bifocal contacts in. If I come a little closer, if that's okay.
Yeah, please.
If you put the mic down, you'll be picked up by their microphones.
If you come closer to us, you'll be picked up by our mics, but I want everybody to be able to see it.
So this particular correspondence was about two or three months after the TPPN, and at the time, Deputy Building Commissioner Visconti, who actually wrote the TPPN and authored it, wrote this letter to Construction Permit Services, which is one of the permit expeditors that have worked on these issues for years. They asked a number of different questions, because they were seeking clarification on this use question, and the one in particular that I highlighted was number three, and the question they asked is, "Will monopoles and communications towers be permitted in manufacturing and commercial districts, as long as they comply with all-"
Hold on a second, what?
They were asking that they can see it, and they, do they have a copy of it?
This was submitted as part of the original submission.
Yes, it is in there.
It's in the original submission.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, could you start again? I didn't hear, I didn't hear what the sentence is.
Sure. So the question that was asked was, "Will monopoles and communications towers be permitted in manufacturing and commercial districts, as long as they comply with all zoning requirements of that district?" The response was, "Monopoles and communications towers, if they are for telephone or other communications, as in Use Group 6, would be permitted in commercial and manufacturing districts if they are in compliance with the zoning resolution." Now, the question is, I'm sure, what's this last part mean, in compliance with the zoning resolution? And I think what you've raised, Chair, and the DOB is now raising is, well, does that mean radio or TV tower special permit as compliance, or does that mean height and setback and other typical dimensional requirements?
It's also a bit of a non-answer.
Yeah.
When it says "as if," it doesn't really answer the question that you're asking.
It's a circular answer.
It could be.
Comply, you'll comply.
It could be, right? So, and I think that's where we'll get to practical application, which is part of our argument in terms of legal analysis on DOB's actual as-applied determinations over the years.
And I just want to add, you know, we see many, many interpretations and reconsiderations here that have been issued by the Department of Buildings over the decades and decades, and I have personal experience with this also, and often it says, "Your request is accepted as long as it complies with the zoning resolution." It's only codes.
Yes.
Back on you.
We understand, we understand. And I think, you know, this is a good point for me to just reframe where we think as an industry we ended up, and really where we've been for the last 20 years without any change in the TPPN, and I'll go through some of the as-applied examples to help with this analysis, but when we look at where we as an industry were in 1998, the policy and the law in the city of New York for our purposes was fairly clear. If you want to install antennas on the roof of any building, and you comply with the TPPN's limits, these are antennas no more than six feet in height and 400 square foot, exempt from zoning, you know, just get a work permit, that's the only question consideration. If it's not, then the question is, is it a commercial or manufacturing zoning district, whether it's a structure on the roof of the building or a tower at grade? Is that something that's permitted by right, subject to setback in height, the sky plane exposure in particular, and in all other scenarios, and in particular residential zones where you wanted to put more of a superstructure on the roof of a building or a tower at grade, that's a special permit requirement? So that's essentially, for all practical purposes, how our industry operated for about the last 20 years, that understanding. What I, and I agree with you, Chair, on how you look at this letter, so I think it's important to look at how DOB has actually applied it, we included in our application materials, and we did not do an exhaustive review of every DOB work permit we could find, but we pulled seven in particular, and they're listed on page four of our fact findings, where we were dealing with very similar scenarios involving monopoles in commercial and manufacturing zoning districts or overlay districts, as we are in this particular appeal, where the DOB issued a work permit, and there was never a requirement to come before the BSA as a special permit, whether it be, you know, a determination on Use Group 6D or a radio or TV tower. This is how the DOB actually applied this determination in its practice. So, and what I did is, I totally picked one for today, but this is one example-
The mic mystery.
Sorry, thank you. I picked one for today. This is, just as an example, this is a monopole facility that was permitted, it happens to be in Queens, it's in a C22 overlay district, and an R32 is the underlying residential district. This is a facility that was issued a work permit, and this is very consistent, similar with the project that actually we applied for in this case. There are many other examples, I didn't bring photos of those, but I listed those, and I think what we have seen historically over the years is, this has been the determination DOB and its applied in the list that we gave you in Queens, Staten Island, the Bronx, and as you can imagine, based on the technology, this is more of an outer borough question, because we're not building these kinds of facilities in certainly downtown Manhattan. And just a footnote, not an issue before the BSA today, but a lot of what we're dealing with DOB currently is, on these towers, what's their position on this use now? And we're going back in for technical reasons to upgrade our antennas, are they taking the position that this tower should have gotten a special permit? That's a question that's before the DOB currently, and we'll obviously work through that with DOB. But at least prospectively, and the question on a new tower, this is similar to what was proposed in our particular instance. So one of the questions I heard at the executive session, and I think it's more appropriate for the DOB, but Linda Montmoreno, who's here in case you have questions, who is with Construction Permit Services, she's done this for 30 years, and there's some materials in the record from her. We don't know exactly why, but a lot of issues started to be raised at the DOB about how to apply, whether it was the TPPN, apply it to new towers, new questions that were being raised about facade mounting of antennas, much broader scope than before you. At that time, an email, which we would consider to be guidance, was given to all the borough commissioners, that essentially said, "Going forward, all of these facilities are going to be classified as radio, if they're at-grade, they're radio-TV towers, and they're going to need a special permit for the BSA."
You're saying there was an in-house DOB memo?
A DOB email from Technical Affairs to Borough Commissioners that outlined a number of positions that were taken.
Was that attached?
No.
That's not included in our materials, and I didn't see it.
How do you know about this memo?
We know about the email-
You mean email?
Yeah, we know about the email because it was shared with Linda Montmoreno, who I mentioned before, essentially as a conduit to our industry about how the DOB was now going to apply lots of different rules.
Could you share the date of that email?
I believe it was October 31 of 2018.
Yes.
Are you planning to submit the email at some point, or?
We can, we can certainly do it. We referenced that there were some changes, but we're happy to provide it.
Sorry, what do you mean, you referenced there were changes?
We, I'm sorry, we reference in our initial materials that there had been some changes, but that we only have this email as evidence of that.
I'm sorry, can I get the date one more time? Can you read it onto the record at least?
Yeah. Yeah. The email is from Marshall Camer, it's dated Wednesday, October 31, 2018. It was actually sent to Linda Montmoreno, who's with Construction Permit Services, and it copied a number of the building's officials.
And it's up in substance?
We're a little confused about why you're not willing to read this email.
Oh, no, no, I'm not willing. I actually, no, I'm happy to read it, and, no, there's nothing secretive about it at all. I think, I was surprised that DOB didn't provide it when they were responding, I thought they were going to give a little bit more historical reference, but the sum and substance, maybe I'll just read it. substance, maybe I'll just read it, if that's okay with you. Hi Linda, thank you for being so patient on this matter. As discussed previously, I finally had my meeting with City Planning on 10/18/2018. I then followed up with the Borough Commissioners during last week's BCTM, the filing of the results of those meetings with respect to antennas, TPPN 598 and zoning. The first section is roof mounted antennas. I'm not sure it's applicable to the appeal, but I'm happy to read it in if you'd like. TPPN 598, limitations of height, area and zoning floor area can be used for non-accessory antennas and related equipment that's mounted on the roofs of all types of buildings in all types of zoning districts. Therefore, the heights and sizes of non-accessory roof mounted antennas and related equipment cannot simply comply with ZR bulk requirements associated with the building's use group and zoning district. Ground mounted antennas, the heights and sizes of any non-accessory ground mounted antennas and related equipment cannot simply comply with ZR bulk requirements associated with the building's use group and zoning district. Rather, such ground mounted antennas must be sent to BSA in accordance with the TPPN statement, quote, "To the extent the antenna and related equipment do not meet these criteria, they may be classified as use group 6 communication equipment structures and as such may require a BSA special, uh, BSA, excuse me, a special BSA permit in residence districts pursuant to ZR 2221," end quote. Please note that ZR 3231 and ZR 4231 have similar BSA permit requirements if such antenna and related equipment are located in commercial and manufacturing zoning districts respectively. And then the third category is sign mounted antennas. TPPN 598 cannot be utilized to allow the mounting of non-accessory antennas on signs, regardless of where such signs are mounted, roof, ground, wall, et cetera, even though such TPPN states in part, the antennas must be attached to a building or other structure that has a use independent of supporting the antennas, because the TPPN does not address the height of the antenna above a sign, nor does it discuss how to size or where to place any accessory telecommunications equipment related to a sign mounted antenna. Also, the TPPN's term, quote, "other" structure, is only referring to rooftop parapets or bulkheads, which are discussed elsewhere in the TPPN. Therefore, because per the TPPN, the, quote, "antenna and related equipment do not meet these criteria, they may be classified as use group 6 communication equipment structures and as such may require a special permit in residence districts pursuant to ZR 2221. Please note that ZR 3231 and ZR 4231 have similar BSA permit requirements to ZR 2221 if such antenna and related equipment are located in commercial or manufacturing zoning districts respectively."
So, we don't really, like, good thing we don't need a very strong foundation to hear evidence, but I'm sure that the Department of Buildings will either acknowledge that is a accurate email or not.
No, but we get a copy of this so that we can actually read it slow.
Yes, yes, absolutely. We're happy to provide that.
Yeah, it's, yeah, there were a lot of different situations that they're setting out and it's, okay, okay, so...
Thank you for reading that.
So, you interpret that as a shifting away from TPPN?
We do.
Okay.
So, one of the things that, and this is a good pivot for me to just kind of come back to the facts on this appeal before I get into some of the legal analysis. This particular project was contemplated by AT&amp;T, and while I'm not sure this is fully relevant to what you're being faced with as a question, its background, these kinds of capital planning decisions are not unique to AT&amp;T. They're constantly looking at the network to provide reliable services to the community. Some of that has covered some of its capacity. And in this particular instance, in this particular area of Staten Island, not surprising, it's a high-traffic corridor, Willowbrook Parkway, a lot of commercial and actual, some adjacent residential use in this particular part of the city. So, one of the things that AT&amp;T does, which is typical, you've heard this before, I'm sure, they go out and they look for a site acquisition because they've got to go into, enter into lease transactions with property owners. And in this particular area, most of the buildings are one or two-story, the utility poles 35 feet in height, plus or minus, there's nearly nothing of substantial height to mount to. So, the TPPN, just for meeting their technical needs, they couldn't simply put antennas on the roof of the building, and they looked at this particular area and said, we really need a tower facility. So, when they look at, at least working under their understanding of the city's rules for the last 20 years, they clearly are going to look at an area to try to conform to what we consider to be the city's policy, which is, if you can't do that, look at commercial and manufacturing zoning districts first, where historically this has been deemed a permitted as-of-right use, subject to height and setback requirements. And if you look at this particular area, and you look at the zoning map, which we supplied, this commercial zoning area is pretty much at the intersection of Forest and Willowbrook Parkway and some of the adjacent roads. And the site we've actually identified is the largest in the area. It's a little over eight acres as a zoning lot. It's the Forest Promenade Shopping Center. It's got a multitude of different retail uses. So, what AT&amp;T did is it leased up a very small portion in the back of the shop right there, near the loading docks and some of the dumpsters, which is really the functional rear of the property. It's actually facing Willowbrook Parkway. So, they leased it, they applied to DOB, they applied based on their historical understanding of how the regulations have been applied. And in fact, DOB issued a permit in September of 2018. That actually is in the record materials we provided. And it specifically lists, the telecommunications monopole issued the permit. And we, really with that point, as an applicant and appellant, we were going through a couple of other permitting idea, excuse me, permitting items we needed, foundation design, things of that nature. That's when this change occurred, and the email I just referenced, a little over a month and a half later came out. And if you look at the DOB records we supplied, it was September, excuse me, October 30th of 2018 that a more general notice of intent to revoke was put on the file. And then actually on November 9th, the permit was revoked. So, for AT&amp;T, one of the things, we certainly didn't want to just jump to any conclusions, although our professional team had this email, we had some understanding that there were changes afoot. We met with the author of the email, Mr. Camner, in February of 2019. We wanted to get an understanding whether or not a more formal ZRD-1 process was going to be necessary. We got some advice and understanding, non-committal, of course, and we expected to be in that kind of setting. But what we elected to do was file an alteration-one permit application with DOB on this use question. And if you look through some of the materials, we prepared a short reform memorandum as to why we think this is a use group classification 6D permitted by right use. At that time, and this is somewhat secondhand for me, Linda Montmoreno actually had these communications, but the Borough Commissioner received that, Borough Commissioner inquired, there actually was some conversations back and forth with Technical Affairs, as I understand, on this question. And then ultimately, the Commissioner's Office upheld the objection that, no, these were now going to be radio, TV towers that need a special permit use. And that's where AT&amp;T looked at this, and because this really addresses not just this site, but some prospective application citywide, and somewhat maybe even more significantly for us as an industry, the retrospective issues, which are not before you now, we elected to take an appeal. Certainly, we could apply pursuant to that ruling and seek a special permit, but we elected to at least present this issue to you.
Is it your position that DOB is permitted to change their stance on this?
On this particular issue, no. And that's where it really gets into the legal analysis, and it's driven by the prior precedent that they've had on this particular issue. And that in this unique case, no, and that what would be a more appropriate process if there was a shift in both policy and law that DOB was looking at, that it's in consultation with Planning Commission and a more legislative approach.
Do you think that, do you think the legislation is clear enough that they're stuck to a certain interpretation of it?
That it's clear enough, and because it's been applied, and what I mean by that is, so there's three parts essentially to our argument. First, that the statutory regulatory construction issue on this question of communications equipment, that that's clear and that's been interpreted as such, that even once we get past that, once the DOB applied this, and I'm referring to administrative ruling and doctrine that the Court of Appeals adopted, Knight v. Malkin, that once you, once you have administrative precedent, same facts, same circumstances, no change in law, Rosenberg case is still good law, TPPN's still good law, that an administrative agency is actually bound to apply prior precedent consistently going forward. And they can't simply just shift midstream and come up with some new interpretation. So, in this particular case, we do believe that that doctrine applies here because it is applied to cellular tower facilities in this unique question.
But I have a question. In a very dynamic industry such as the cellular industry, where there have been great changes over the past 20 years, isn't it possible that DOB could then look at their policies and review them and say that these policies are no longer appropriate because the industry today isn't where it was 20 years ago? And maybe we need to take another look at this?
Certainly, the Planning Commission could do that. I think the DOB can look at their TPPN, there are a number of different ways in which the TPPN might go forward. And actually, we, in a very collaborative way, we're looking for the DOB to work with us on that because of technology changes. We have a need to, somewhat outside the context of this appeal, but hang antennas on the sides of buildings, not just on the roof of building, getting closer to where the people are. This is somewhere the technology's going. And right now, DOB's position is, we can't do that. So, we may be looking for positive change for our industry purposes, and we recognize that DOB may change some of their TPPN on how it's been applied in the past as well.
So, sorry, just to pick up on that, you said a Planning Commission can do that. An administrative agency has the right to change, to modify its interpretations as the times change?
They certainly do, and I'm not saying that, in responding to the Commissioner's question, in this case, I think they are bound, but yes, generally as a matter of interpretation.
Why are they bound in this case?
Going back to the Court of Appeals decision in Knight v. Malkin, that administrative agencies like DOB or zoning agencies have to apply prior precedent that they adopted when the facts and law are the same. And there's been, no, here, there's been no change in the TPPN, Rosenberg is still good law for the last 20 years.
But the facts have changed. So, I just want to, you know, when we talk about these early sort of 90s situation with cell phones, actually, there's this really funny website where you can look at what cell phones have looked like since the beginning of time, right? And where they started off being like GetSmart's shoe, right? And how big they were in the 90s until the little Star-Tac is, I think, early 2000s, right? So, at that time period, for one, you're just at the beginning of the breakup of the monopoly, and you're just at the beginning of all the cell companies starting to, each of them individually want to mount their own cellular systems. We see many applications where an entire roof is crowded with the antennae. And it's because Sprint won't work with AT&amp;T, AT&amp;T won't work with Verizon, won't work with whoever the other guys are. And so, everybody has their array on this roof, and the roof is a forest. And so, I think that's not, in the case of Rosenberg, the court wasn't looking at a situation where there was commercial competition, which is different than a public utility in my mind. A public utility is, for example, we have Con Edison, they're the ones providing the electricity here, right? That's the public utility. If, if instead, though, it was all of this commercial competition, then to give, well, the subject of deference, of course, has to do with the variance, which is not what we're talking about here, but to give kind of blanket opportunity to a commercial operation doesn't seem to me to be in the public interest. And I think that's where DOB says, whoa, wait a minute, if we let AT&amp;T just build whatever they want, wherever they wanted in the commercial districts, what's to stop all the competition from doing exactly the same thing? We need to look at this again because we were looking at it under a different situation where it's true, they were just going on the roof, they weren't going on the side of a building, they weren't going in other places, there were fewer of them, et cetera.
But to that, like, reasonable interpretations are not necessarily exclusive, especially when times change?
Yes, and I think, just adding to this conversation, this is not, if you will, and agree that there are three or four providers of wireless services in the marketplace. That's why I actually think it's a narrow question that you're being presented with. This is not where radio, TV, and I'll get to actually the DOB's position, which is much broader, and I was surprised to see, that all these different kinds of communications uses somehow that this is a kind of opening of the door for them to walk in. I think under DOB's point of view, that could be the case, but for our purposes, we're just talking about three or four providers. And the issue that the Court of Appeals addressed was not historic utility regulation and agreed, monopoly, duopoly, where we started, but has upheld that these services that are provided are the, and it's the service that we're focused on to the consumer and the public versus whether or not there's one, two, three or four in the marketplace driving the question of the utility service and use classification. So, that actually has been the case in the state of New York for some time. And where we, not to get too far afield, but where we've seen actually a lot of change in law that the DOB and the city is actually bound by is at the federal level on these issues, and rooftops being an example. The way that the FCC and Congress have looked at this, and they've said, once an establishment of this use has been made on a rooftop, other competitors, two or three others, should be able to come in, same treatment, same approval process, and there's actually a whole set of federal constructs for that. So, I don't think we're disagreeing that things, times can change. I think that there has to be a, certainly if we're talking about Planning Commission, a policy rationale. If we're talking about DOB, I think there has to be a legitimate factual or legal change that's precipitating this. And we have not yet heard from the DOB what exactly that is.
You'll hear from...
I'm sure we will.
And also, it's worth pointing out that in the Knight versus Malkin case, the court specifically says, "We only hold that because petitioners have shown earlier determinations of the board reaching contrary results on essentially the same facts, an explanation or in the alternative of conforming to determination is required." And so, we will be hearing an explanation.
Yes. And that's actually, if I can, and I don't know that I need to spend too much time on this particular slide, but, I'm going to come a little closer based on the prior. Though this, I think this is more related to Department of Buildings. They have been focused on, and on this particular use classification being a building and something that was reserved for buildings, going back to the telephone exchange question. This is a construct of regulatory law that words have to be given meaning. The use of the language structure within the actual use group 6D, we think, is important. And actually, the definition of building, when you look at it, it actually talks about structures that are not buildings that are covered by the zoning resolution, which makes sense. You would want to cover and regulate structures. So, we simply point this out, that the definition of building specifically includes any building or any other structure of any kind. And so, when the Planning Commission used the word "structure" in use group 6D, it had to be given meaning. It didn't mean a building. It meant something like billboards, fences or radio towers, which you were saying before. But certainly, it has to be given some meaning. It can't simply be that that was a limited use for buildings only.
But this actually contradicts what you're saying, because among the lists are radio towers, which is a special permit use.
It doesn't actually contradict by definition. I think what this says is, "A building shall not include, shall not include such structures as billboards, fences, radio towers or structures with interior surfaces not normally accessible for human use such as gas tanks, smoke stacks or similar structures." This doesn't say that all communication structures are radio, TV towers. It's just the definition of building that I pointed out because I think the DOB was saying that for some reason, they thought use group 6D was limited to buildings.
Well, because of the history of telephone exchanges, and if we, if we use the city planning's legislative history and their submission, at the time, there were the gigantic buildings going up. And I think that part of the reason where they have this other communication structure language is because they're aware that the zoning resolution is this very sort of static document that lasts for decades and decades, if not centuries. And that they need to be able to adjust to the changes. So, if it's not called a telephone exchange, it's called a different, I mean, for instance, the cloud is my favorite example of that. That's a communication structure, right? That's what we're doing with all of it. It's not a telephone exchange, and it gets installed in a building that's very similar to what, you know, the Verizon building or something like that. So, and I forget, there's called some kind of hotel, right? There are...
Data centers.
Data center hotels or something like that. So, it's something that was not predicted at the time that this text was written. And so, they're trying to leave it open. And the reason that I think it's, you stay with the building when you're talking about this, is why then otherwise would they have that very long description of how you measure the floor area and floor to floor heights and all that? They might have said, in the case of telephone exchanges, the height is limited to this. They might have said, "In the case of telephone exchanges, the height is limited to this." But instead, all of that description occurs after the word "other communications equipment."
And I look at that, and I had that same question. I view it differently, respectfully. You know, the 1961 amendments looked at telephone exchange or other communications equipment structure. So, I look at it and say, that has to be given meaning. They use the word "or." It doesn't mean the same thing as telephone exchange. And telephone exchange is certainly broad enough, whether it was building or some other type of structure, to address the intent you raised, that things may evolve over time.
It does, but a cloud? Whoever heard of that? What's a cloud?
But frankly, the cloud is not necessarily a use. It's just a technology, right? So, the question is, is what's the use in the building?
No, the use is thousands of computers whirring around, keeping what we're doing right as we speak, right? So, who could have imagined that?
Yes, and that could be classified in a lot of different ways. It doesn't have to be telephone exchange. It could be other uses that DOB has applied to that.
Other uses could be anything, right? At that point, it doesn't exactly make it exclusive to your argument.
No, it doesn't, exactly. And so, I think that there was, but I come back to the use listing, and structure has to be given meaning, and it meant something other than building. So, one of the things that, and I'm taking a fair amount of time, I want to...
It's okay, it's an important question.
I want to address one other issue that the DOB raised before yielding on this. And it goes back to what I was saying before, and it's kind of the expansive nature, I think, of where DOB seemed to be going. This board is, I'm showing you purposely because it could be confusing. This is a color-coded chart, and I did not give you the 170 pages of narrative that go with it, that is, all of the radio spectrum frequency that's managed by the FCC and all of the different applications that are used for this. So, when I read the DOB's letter statement, they were focusing on a gigahertz range. This is that gigahertz range. So, essentially, what I heard DOB at least saying through their brief was, everything on this board is radio. And radio in the generic sense of the word, going back to Marconi and the technology. When you look specifically at this, the blue items are AM/FM broadcasting and TV, which is what my position has been. The AM/FM broadcast, broadcast TV, these are the things the Planning Commission was considering when they used the words "radio" or "TV tower." If they meant something else, they would have said "communications tower." But they use the words "radio" or "TV," and it has to be given meaning. And what did they mean? They meant AM/FM, TV broadcast. They didn't mean something else. On this particular chart, gray boxes, which, well, actually, they show the little pink here, but are mobile, and they're not the same as the blue. The FCC doesn't classify it as such. These are different frequencies. When I looked at DOB's position, they seem to be saying, everything on here, which includes radar, meteorological, satellite, space communications, anything that was terrestrial and on the ground, they would classify as a radio or TV tower. I think that's actually expanding way beyond what was the Planning Commission's intention, and that that's not actually an appropriate way to interpret the word "radio" or "TV" by referring to the broad category of radio frequencies, if you will.
So, to my knowledge, there's no place in the zoning resolution that talks about satellite dishes, right?
In 1961, there were three.
Yeah, right. So, I mean, so that's the thing, you know, if, and for one, most of the time, they're installed on either military sites, at the Port Authority, and so, those are outside of city planning's regulatory authority, right? So, you know, now you're expanding, expanding this far beyond the scope of what we're talking about. DOB has only asked, can you install stuff that has to do with cellphone use without regulation anywhere at all in the, in the commercial districts? And I don't think it's, and DOB, unfortunately, when city planning chooses not to act to clarify, because it's certainly aware that this is an issue, DOB is stuck with the job of figuring out how to better regulate uses in the city. And what you're suggesting is, based on a very difficult-to-understand chart, that DOB doesn't have the right to do that, and I don't agree.
No, I'm not suggesting they don't have the right. And I wanted to come back to something that you just mentioned, Chair. We're not saying that towers can be built indiscriminately without subject to rules. We're saying the sky plane exposure setbacks, and in commercial manufacturing zones, they're permitted uses. I'm only referencing what the DOB referenced in their materials. I looked at that and said, if you're going to use the broad definition of radio that includes all of this, which, which is beyond just military installations, which I agree, there's a preemption issue there, that's a much broader justification for trying to say that cellular fits in radio because cellular's included in this huge list versus a more narrow interpretation of, do we fall within utility use group 6D, or are we really radio or TV tower?
So, that's why I said in my comments yesterday that I didn't really think it was fair to ask the DOB to sort of enlist its, you know, arguably, high school understanding of radio frequencies, you know, because none of the, none of the people at DOB are radio frequency specialists. They're engineers, architects, like that, lawyers. To ask them to, every time there's an application, to do some sort of math to figure out what the megahertz are, I think that's outside of the scope of the Department of Buildings. And that's why I said, you just look at it from a very simple land use perspective. It's a monopole. It sits on the ground. It's tall. It either transmits or receives data or whatever. It transmits or receives radio frequency that's regulated by the FCC, and then you're done. Because they can't get deeper into figuring out whether it fits on this band or that band or this band.
And if they said something specific, if there was something specifically that stated only radio towers, only these frequencies, that would, that would add to the, to your argument, but that's, I don't see that yet.
Can I add to this? I agree with Chair, is that the real focus really should be the structure and not what the frequencies are. And I was not very pleased with DOB's statement of that this therefore qualifies as a radio tower because of the frequency. By that measure, as he has stated, many things would qualify. So, we need to stay away from the technology. Technology is going to be a moving target. So, we need to look at something that is a little bit more related to what the purpose of the zoning was, which is land use, neighborhood use, those kind of things.
Yeah, I understood the argument is what the function was, as opposed to what the wavelength was.
And I actually share all those positions. I think what we've been focused on is that this is a very narrow, limited appeal as it relates to cellular and its public utility status. Anything else and how DOB might classify it really is not subject to this appeal. And when we look at the language that was used, we just come back to and say, we are a public service establishment. We are a telephone exchange by operation of New York State law. That is what we provide on the services. And this is, without any debate, an other communication structure. It's a tower. There's no debate with that. The only question then is, is it also, based on this analysis, a radio or TV tower? And what was that language intended to mean? And when we come back to, and I agree, common sense and land use has to apply sometimes, we just come back and say, oh, they meant big FAA-marked lit towers that are 300, 400 foot tall, not these community-based telephone-type exchanges that happen to be wireless, that are much smaller monopoles, and that that actually is a rational reading when we look at comprehensive land use planning. We have antennas that are exempt on the roof. We have commercial and manufacturing zones where it's permitted because there's a good land use policy for that. We want to, we want you to go there before you go to residential zones. And if you come into a residential zone, special permit, no matter what you call it, 6D, radio tower, doesn't matter, you're going to have to go through a special permit process. And we've seen that as a rational land use planning approach.
Isn't, isn't providing radio reception a public service?
It's certainly something that the public enjoys, and it's an important public service, but it is not a public utility. And in fact, when we look at, and this was a case that came out of the Fordham decision with the tower, the Court of Appeals looked at that and had an opportunity, if it wanted to, to talk about radio classification, but they just simply focused on it's radio and accessory use. They didn't go back and revisit their '93 opinion in Rosenberg. And there's no basis to say that radio, TV is a utility service under that analysis that Rosenberg adopted in '93.
But you could certainly argue it. I mean, without radio, I mean, today, when you're streaming, it's a little bit of a different thing. But a little while ago, without TV, people were cut off from the world, right? So, and without radio, you're cut off from the world. So, I actually don't understand how that wouldn't be viewed as also an important public service, hence, public utility, in the same way as all these competing commercial cell providers are. You know, it'd be different when we had landlines and there was one provider. But now, with all of these competing providers, I think it's, the landscape has shifted. I have a couple of questions. Do you have other statements, questions? I have a couple of questions. So, we're trying to figure out the guidance that sends us to which one of these things it is. And so, I talked about the 52 applications or 51 applications at the BSA where those things, those monopoles, are described as radio towers. So, how can it be a radio tower sometimes and not a radio tower other times? And what about in that case that did come before the BSA that talked about the TPPN, where OmniPoint said, "We are not a telecommunications structure"?
Yes, so I may address those. Those are great questions. The, and I did the same thing that you did, Chair. I went back and I did searches of the BSA's database using word searches and language to see what I could find. Overwhelmingly, the BSA special permits you're citing involve towers in residential zones. Or they involve towers involving, for example, the city's proprietary network, Nyswin. They did not involve cellular towers in commercial and manufacturing zoning districts like this. So, that was the overwhelming. Now, I could, I did not, for purposes of the appeal, but I'd be happy to provide a more compendium or a table of that, describing that.
No, but my question is, we're talking about the use. So, if, how does it go from being one use to being another use? I mean, if there's such different uses, if the frequencies are completely irrelevant, et cetera, et cetera, then how, how could they go from being a radio tower over here and not a radio tower over here? And where we only have two special permits for telecommunication? Yeah, arguably two.
Since 2013.
Since 20, well, since the entire search on the website, so I don't even know how far back it goes.
I would share that that's, that is a question for the DOB, but I'll give you the industry perspective on that. It goes back to what I was saying before, what's not an issue, at least, and presented to you in residential zones and towers. For the industry's point of view, once we know we're in a residential zoning district, whether you, it's all, it's irrelevant from a regulatory process in terms of coming before you on the use as a special permit. Even if you go down the 6D telecommunications exchange, other communications equipment structure, that's a special permit use in residential zones. Radio, TV tower, that's a special permit use. So, from the industry point of view, if it's in a residential zone and it's a tower, we're going to be here no matter what. How the DOB classifies it, whether or not to raise as an appellate issue, should it be 6D, should it be radio tower? I mean, those are just practical issues that an industry's not going to present to the BSA. We're going to, we're going to look at it and say, either way you classify this, we've got to come before the BSA. So, why would we raise these as appeals? That's not necessary. We're going to come before you on a special permit regardless.
But it builds a huge record, 51 cases of radio tower against two cases of telecommunications You can't ignore this consistent definition of it. It seems like if the cellular telephone companies were insisting that it's other telecommunications equipment, it would have been applying under that special permit.
Yeah, I just don't think that that was ever an issue that was highlighted as a pragmatic matter. And what we look at as the important distinction on the record is not what those two versus the 50 you cite, but it's the seven plus, there are more. We can, we can also do more work on that at the DOB, that were classified as permitted uses. That's, that's the relevant distinction we see. Because if, if the issue had gone over the last 20 years in a different direction on commercial and manufacturing, we might have said, okay, we're going to have to raise this issue. But we're now here for the first time on that question.
Really? I have a little trouble with that. I have this huge underlayment of it being classified as a radio tower. So, that's the thing, I don't really have to pull away from that. That's the way the BSA has treated all of those applications, so.
And if it's both, the more restrictive rules, if it's both, the more restrictive rules apply.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And then, the other question I have, oh, no, those were responded to, okay.
The TPPN was your other question, and in that appeal that was before you, we were talking about it before, it was a jurisdictional question. Did the DOB have the authority to issue the TPPN and determine that certain antennas installed on any building, regardless of underlying use or zoning classification, are exempt from zoning? You upheld that determination. What OmniPoint's position was a much narrower position. I don't believe they took the position before the BSA, that if we are not exempt, we should never be classified as use group 6D, telephone exchange, or other equipment structure. Their position was, the unique facts of this case, we fit the TPPN. And the appellate in that case was trying to say, no, the TPPN was wrongfully issued, it should be deemed void, you know, outside the actual ultra-vires, the jurisdiction of DOB. And if they prevailed on that, it would have been deemed, whether it was radio tower or 6D, a special permit use, and they would have had an obligation as an applicant to come before you. And if you're an opponent, they would have had a form in which to present their case. So, that case, I don't think stands for the proposition by a competitor to AT&amp;Ts that somehow these are not telephone exchanges or other equipment structures. They're just narrowly focused on the TPPN and upholding the exemption.
Okay.
And on the more restrictive use, I would only say, the DOB's position on that goes, it relates back, and not that it's circular, but it relates back. They've got to determine that this is radio, TV tower in order for that analysis under the zoning resolution to apply.
Fair.
When you got the 2018 permit, it took the DOB like, like, a month and a half, two months to send you an notice to revoke, right?
Yes, that is the timeline.
What was time-wise? What was the closest similar job to this that was permitted by DOB?
Linda, do you know? Can I introduce Linda? She might know.
Yeah. And Commissioner Schenck, could you speak up into the mic, please?
Yeah, sure. I'm asking, when they got the 2018 permit for the subject job, it took DOB like, a month and a half to send them an notice to revoke the permit, which has happened? But I'm asking about the closest, time-wise, similar job to the subject one that was permitted by DOB before this job?
Previously.
Yes.
I don't, unfortunately, I have the research.
If you speak, you must identify yourself and...
Hi, my name is Linda Montz Moreno from Construction Permit Services. I am the expediter for many of the wireless carriers, and I would have to do some research to find out the last monopole that was approved. But we have had quite a few over the last 20 years that were permitted as a right in commercial manufacturing zones. So, we could do, we could certainly do that research and get that information.
Of course, I'm asking about within the city, not outside.
Yes, absolutely. I only work within five boroughs of here. Okay.
That's fine.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions from Commissioners? Counselor, you're okay? Okay, so I'd like to hear from the DOB, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Michael Walker. I am Assistant General Counsel with the Department of Buildings. So, this appeal really boils down to the appellate wanting to classify this tower as a communications equipment structure so that they don't have to meet the more restrictive provisions of the zoning resolution. The appellate wants the board to consider a new construction 75-foot monopole in a commercial district as a right, so that way, the appellate doesn't have to get a special permit. The department has determined that the proposed monopole is a non-accessory radio tower. The applicant submitted an ult one. The department objected, stating simply that such use, such proposed use would require a special permit pursuant to zoning resolution 3231. A freestanding cellular antenna is not a telephone exchange or communications equipment structure, as that term is used in 3215 of the zoning resolution. Because without a special permit process as available through zoning resolution 7330, as was discussed prior, and also as the City Planning Commission report clarifies, the zoning resolution 3215 was about... zoning resolution 3215 was about massive buildings, structures that lacked, not structures that lacked floor area or bulk, as we have here in this proposed monopole. Classifying a cellular tower as a telephone exchange or other communications equipment structure would not be subject to any special permit, public hearing process that could take place, such that the board would be able to place conditions and safeguards to minimize adverse effects on the character of the surrounding area throughout the city. This could create absurd results in certain areas where towers could be, could reach as high as 617 feet without the need for special permit. Essentially, the, the appellate argues that this is not a radio tower. Radio tower is not defined in the zoning resolution. The term "radio" is not defined in the zoning resolution. So we turned, so the department turned to the common definition of radio, which is why we ended up in this discussion about various frequencies. Without delving into the technicalities of various radio frequencies, we stopped simply at, this is emitting a radio frequency, it is a monopole tower. That seemed very straightforward, and it was important to counter the appellant's argument that this was not some sort of radio tower structure. Also, considering the land use characteristics of the proposed monopole, it's very similar to a radio tower. I mean, it has the same type of profile and emits frequency that the community will use. So looking at it just from that perspective, it seemed to the department that this was clearly a radio tower. However, it's also not a communications equipment structure. So, we've, I've heard.
Sorry, a radio communications or a telecommunications?
Excuse me, telephone exchange or communications equipment structure. There has been some discussion about the word structure. The actual word structure was not defined in the zoning resolution. There was a part in the zoning resolution 1210 where the phrase "building or other structure" is defined, and it's very, very broadly defined. It didn't give the department much guidance. So the department turned to legislative history for clarification. The 1972 City Planning Commission report demonstrated that telephone exchanges or other communications equipment structures that were contemplated in use group 6D were limited to massive buildings. They lacked floor area. They were not referring to freestanding towers.
Well, that would be the building part of it. So what would be the structure part of it?
Well, the fact, whether or not a tower is a structure isn't in dispute. What we're trying, what the department looked to was, is this structure, is this tower under the specific zoning resolution 3215 a use group 6D? And looking to the legislative history proved that the City Planning Commission contemplated telephone exchange-type structures in modifying the resolution, which implies that communications equipment structures were not of the type that is proposed here in this 75-foot monopole.
So, did you have some idea of what they meant by the "other communication structures"? It says "telecommunication exchanges" and "other communication structures." Did you have an idea of what they meant by the "other"?
My understanding is that there were, at the time that, at the time that, in 1971, there were no cell towers. The technology had barely been invented. And what the City Planning Commission, my understanding is that there were large exchange, telephone exchange equipment that needed to be stored in buildings with very, very high ceilings, very, very high heights for floors. So there was a need to clarify the zoning resolution in order to make room for these types of structures.
But the, the part "exchange" is already included in the first part of the sentence. The second part talks about "other."
Right, so if I understand your question correctly, you're asking if other communications equipment structures.
What is that?
What do they mean by that?
Right, it is, it must be then different from a telephone exchange, because.
That's already covered.
That's covered.
Unless they're arguing it's a catch-all.
So what is the other communication equipment?
I might have to get back to you with that answer.
And one more thing, are, is it the position of the department that if this, whatever, monopole or call it whatever, was a building? Let's say that was 10 feet by 10 feet building, has floors, and raised to whatever the bulk, the permitted bulk allows in that underlying zoning district. Would it be okay for the department to?
Well, when there is floor area involved, the height of the structure would be appropriately limited by floor area ratio in the zoning. So, a monopole creates a unique, a unique situation where the absence of a floor area creates the possibility for a very, very high structure based on floor area ratio calculation. So if it gets at the need for.
If it becomes a building with a floor area, and the floor area extends to, this is 70 feet, let's say if it's possible, abasically, 70 feet, very similar to that one. Instead of two-feet diameter shaft, it's five by five or 10 by 10, going to 70 feet. Would that be okay? From the department?
What do you mean, okay? What do you mean, okay?
Would that be permitted by the department?
Would the department of buildings say? Would the department of buildings state that this is inappropriate, this is appropriately placed here without needing a special permit?
Right, I mean, I think what Commissioner Sheta is saying, what if the telecommunications structure was a 10 by 10 round circular structure? Am I understanding?
Yes, and instead of, and instead of two-feet diameter shaft, it's now five by five or 10 by 10 structure, four columns with connecting beams, some floors rising to whatever, and complying with the underlying zoning requirements for floor area, height, whatever. But it's not a shaft. It's, it's.
Like, has floor area.
It's a more bulky structure, but has what DOB is looking for. Would, would this be classified as a public?
No, as a telephone exchange, never mind public utility.
Use group 6D.
No, use group 6D telephone exchange or other telephone.
It comes under this, this blanket that's mentioned in that two-piece definition.
Like, where does it stop being a telecommunications, sorry, telephone exchange? And when does it start going, becoming a tower?
Radio tower.
Right.
Well, it's my understanding that the, the City Planning Commission would have, in 1961 and subsequently in 1971, considered that a building because of the floor area and because it would likely meet, based on what you've said, I would have to confirm on the language, but, would likely meet the definition of a building. And as a building, it would permissively be a use group 6D. And.
Whoa, 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 slow down. No, no, I, I really think you need to be more, try not to answer these things without actually thinking it through.
Sure.
Because the question is, if you fill this up with cellular equipment, which is done sometimes, we see like in Staten Island, there's a smokestack that is filled with cellular equipment. Now, this, it's an, I think, I don't remember whether it's a decorative, no, I think it's an existing smokestack that was part of an historic structure, right? And inside is cellular equipment, right? But let's say you were building it from scratch. The use is the same use as what this monopole is, right? It's going to house telephone, telephone communications equipment, and its only function is for that. It's not the same as what the TPPN talks about, putting it on the roof of an existing building, right? Which is a separate thing. That building has a use. What Commissioner Sheta is talking about is, you build a structure entirely for cellular communications equipment, right? Is it a cell tower? Is it a radio tower? Or is it a telephone exchange or other structure, right?
Do you build the structure that has floor area, that has?
Yes, with floor area.
That has, if, that's very similar to a building. I would call it even a building as an engineer. Would, according to your position that you just indicated, that wouldn't need a special permit from us if it is a building-like. But for me, I, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I can swallow this. If it's a building, it's more bulky, it's from zoning perspective, it's like a nonsense.
Yeah, well, you're limited in height. You're limited in how far you can go.
Understood, yes.
Right, and also I would add that.
I would think that's one of those questions you might want to answer in writing.
Yeah, don't answer this off the top.
Right, and I wanted to.
Especially applying the 1961 definition of building, which includes carve-outs. So I think a written analysis will be very helpful.
And after that, you had stated that a monopole is emitting frequency. I want, and I think this is both for you and for the industry, to explain, is the monopole just a structure on which the antenna is mounted? Or is monopole by itself emitting, like the radio frequency towers?
Right.
They're very specifically designed, and they haven't changed over the history.
Yeah.
I mean, but more or less at this lattice construction.
It just gets you up high.
Yeah.
So that you can have your transmitter at the top.
I, that's the part. Also, I would like to know, is the radio frequency the entire structure, an emitting structure, or is it just the top of it? So, all of those questions are very important for us to understand, as to how you're defining the monopole as being the part of the cellular system, or is it just a structure on which the cellular system or the antennas, more specifically, are being mounted? To me, that is an important distinction.
A, a monopole is usually looked at, and that, and I have some sort of idea about that. In, in the industry, you can call, if you have a pole that holds a wind turbine, it could, they call this a monopole. I know for a fact that there are, there are some, some engineering analysis programs that like market themselves as, we have a module for a monopole element built in. So a, a monopole is not related to communication, or is not related to power grid access?
No, right, no, but I think the question is, which is something that's been coming up with signs, which is what we talked about yesterday. The sign industry builds monopoles. Then you find out, which we had in one case, that the sign is illegal. So the monopole was built for a specific use, which was the sign. The monopole's still standing, what is it? Right? So, it seems to us, to me, anyway, you can never allow, and unfortunately, DOB has allowed, and I, I would really recommend that they stop allowing, the construction of these structures that are intended to hold something and never end up holding the thing. Because what you're also confronted with is monopoles that were built with, for signs that have been abandoned because there's no sign allowed. And then the cellular industry coming to that monopole and saying, "We want to put cellular equipment up there." So, I, I think, no question that there's this whole industry that builds these monopoles, and then they go away. And then they're used for something, and we saw one used for a wind turbine, right? But it was actually built for a sign. And why can't it now be used for cellular equipment? So, it seems that the TPPN, to me, is about a building built for a particular use, residence, commercial building, onto which you place this accessory collection of little antennae. As opposed to a monopole that's being built specifically to, onto which you mount the cellular equipment, right? Or into which, because we also see one where they put it inside as opposed to like this, right?
And the plans submitted by the appellant show that the monopole itself serves as a container for conduit, for fiber cables, and things. So the monopole itself does serve a purpose with the antenna. The antenna, to differentiate it from signs without treading into, getting into the weeds, taking a sign off of a monopole, the message is still conveyed. If you take an antenna off of a monopole, it's useless. The monopole and the antenna.
Sorry, say that one more time.
If you take the antenna off of the monopole, it no longer serves its purpose. It stops working. It has to be connected to power, it has to be connected to a network, and those, the monopole itself is used to house the cabling and communications wiring.
But it's used to house the cables, not the antenna itself. The antenna is mounted at the top. But let's say they cut these cables and, let's say these cables for power supply for the antenna, and they cut these cables, cables, and they put, yes, solar, some solar spores at the top, and.
That still wouldn't work because the antennas, based on ANT 009, I believe, in the plans, show that there is a fiber optic cable running through the monopole.
But I have to say, I don't think it matters what's inside the monopole. Because in this situation, I don't know if there's anything inside that monopole. It could be running on the outside, it could be working with cellular, whatever. The question is, is the pole built for the express purpose of mounting the cellular equipment? And the, you know, just as, was the sign structure built for the express purpose of holding a sign? Once the sign comes down, does the pole have any purpose? The same here. Take all of that array off, does the pole have any purpose? Which is a distinction from the building that houses an existing commercial use, whatever, wherever, and then you put the, the antennae on top.
And I think, Mr. Walker, you answered my question, because you had stated just earlier that the monopole is emitting frequency. And I think, based on your statement, it's not.
It's not.
It's, it's just a structure that is going to enable, and, and enable antennas that would emit frequency.
Right, that's not to say that it couldn't be changed in the future.
Yeah, we just have to be careful in the wording.
No, but I, I do want to say, we have another case where all the equipment is inside of the monopole. So if we're talking, this is kind of a general interpretive question, right? So the general question is, if you have a monopole that in some way supports or houses cellular equipment, it doesn't really matter whether it's inside or outside. Staten Island, for instance, is quite strict, where they want to have, they succeed in getting these cellular equipment concealed inside of structures, right? So that's why we see these, you know, not bad-looking monopoles into which is mounted all of that equipment, for example.
I, I think at the end, the way I see it, and I, and I'm not the technology expert on that at all, it's the antennas that are emitting the frequencies. The equipments are there, providing energy, saving data, converting from analog to digital and what have you, but they're not emitting the frequency. And if that's the concern, it's, they're two different things. So if the antenna is not there, equipment could be just sitting, they're not emitting anything. So, we have to, again, this is, I agree, the technology's going to keep changing, so we cannot get, get into the detours of the technology. It's really how we're treating the structure in this, in terms of land use and zoning.
And if I may add to what you've just said, I agree with that, and, and I would say that, that further emphasizes the need for a special permit in these situations where the board may appropriately place restrictions upon the use and such.
So this is something I'd also like you to look at. What, what the DOB is doing is saying, this should be a special permit. You're skipping over to the special permit. And, and what's before us is, what is the use? Right?
Right.
The question is, is this tele, a telephone exchange or other communications equipment use group 6D? That's question A.
Right.
And if it's not, does it, is it therefore a radio tower? Your explanation can't be that we don't, we, DOB, don't want to deal with it, therefore it should go for a special permit. It needs to be that you create a strong foundation for the use. And the other thing that needs to be, because that's what's presented to you in this case, is TPPN has existed since the 90s, and now it seems as if there's a shifting away. The question was, and you must justify that, right? If the DOB has consistently behaved in a certain way, it's entitled to change its position, which it does, right? But it has to explain what, what's new? What are the new facts that change its position? That's just a basic administrative law requirement, right?
Absolutely. The department agrees.
Mm-hmm.
TPPN 5 of 98 was promulgated to facilitate the approval of cellular antenna applications at a time when cellular telephony had recently become a prevalent form of communications essential to the public. But there. But there were an insufficient number of small cell deployments at the time, there were gaps. Specifically in residential districts, antennas could not be permitted as of right, because they were not permitted as a residency, in a residential district. So they didn't, they also didn't meet the definition of accessory to use on a zoning lot, because the antennas served the neighborhood. As long as antennas and related equipment met the criteria of the TPPN, they would not be subject to the zoning resolution. So the idea was to facilitate the deployment. The TPPN further stated that if a facility did not meet the limitations of the bulletin, they could be allowed in residence district, subject to zoning resolution, with a special permit pursuant to ZR 2221. However, the TPPN did not address every possible cellular antenna that did not meet the criteria of the bulletin, to automatically consider them communications equipment structures. Specifically, the TPPN did not interpret whether a standalone, at-grade monopole with antennas could be a communications equipment structure in a manufacturing or a commercial district, as we have here. Nonetheless, some plan examiners may have read into the TPPN that all antennas do not, that do not meet the criteria of the bulletin, would be allowed as communications equipment structures, and thus permitted as of right, without a special permit in a CRM. After looking at the issue, after studying the issue, we know that, based on the changing technology, and the promulgation of antennas, and the prospective promulgation of antennas all around the city, this required further research. So we now understand better that a freestanding cellular antenna, tower, even in a residential district, not on a building, could not be a communications equipment structure. Rather, the term is reserved for equipment on or attached to a building. And any freestanding tower structure must be a radio, radio or television tower that requires a special permit.
We need that briefed more clearly. Because I think what you're saying is, some plan examiners, but not all plan examiners, read that if we're not in a residence district, then, you know, all, all deals are off, therefore go ahead and just build. Whereas others didn't interpret it that way. That's a little confusing, because I think it actually says, though I don't have the text right in front of me, I think it actually says that, if it isn't on the roof, and it doesn't fall within these parameters of square footage and so on, then it will be classified as use group 6D. I think it says that, actually.
Yeah, the language...
To the extent the antenna and related equipment do not meet this criteria, they may be classified as use group 6, quote-unquote, "communication equipment structures," and as such, may require a special permit in residence district pursuant to ZR 22-21.
Okay, right, so I don't know how that can be read, other than, if they're bigger, and you want to put it in a residence district, come for a special permit. But if you're in a, in a commercial district, if that's the classification, go right ahead. So I don't think it's fair to say that some plan examiners misread it, and therefore, it sounds like that was the policy of the DOB. I really recommend that you clarify that, because it sounds like you're pulling back from your own TPPN. And you need to demonstrate that you weren't, back then, pulling back from your own TPPN, that it's incredibly badly written, and that there actually was a different way of processing applications in commercial districts, which is not what we see demonstrated by at least the seven approvals that were given to us by the cellular company. Did you want to answer?
I just wanted to say, having worked in government for 30 years, I can understand that, you know, you can write something, and if it's not specific down to the letter, dictating what an employee needs to do, then every employee is going to read into it something different. And I could see where maybe you had 50 applications, if 10 people are reading it differently, okay, you know, we'll correct it next time around, but if you then have 500 applications, and 100 people are reading it differently, then it becomes a situation where an agency has to go, okay, we have to look at this, and we have to refine it, and we have to be a little more specific. So I can almost see where Department of Buildings may have started out going, oh, this is the beginning of an industry, you know, a few here and there, and maybe one or two people are going off on their own and reading it, saying, well, if it, you know, if it's not in a residential district, we're good to go. And then all of a sudden, when you have 1,000 of them in the city, in the boroughs, which went through as of right, and then the community is in an uproar, of course, because as of right means ugly, basically, ugly but functional, then you have to look at it and say, as an agency, all right, now we have to put the stops on this, and we have to really be specific and very direct in how we want our employees to follow this TPPN, or the zoning resolution. So not to say that that gives them a pass, but I'm just saying, I can see where, where this had happened, and how, you know, it's believable that, that what you're saying actually happened.
Okay. So we need more on this particular subject.
Sure, and I would, if I may also point that an alternative interpretation of that sentence may be, and this is how I initially read it, until I saw the appellant's papers, I hadn't thought of an alternative interpretation, where this sentence is bringing Section 2221 to the attention of the plan examiners, rather than stating that this is what needs to be done, or implying that what, or implying that something must be done in certain districts. Merely pointing out that it is possible that they could be classified as use group 6, and therefore, analysis would be required, would be the logical follow-up to my interpretation.
I think I'm also trying to understand the, what led to the creation of TPPN, especially in light of the letters, the communication letters that went on between various DOB commissioners and the industry. And that communication started way back in 1990, before even the TPPN was written. And in those cases, it seems, and you should also look at those letters and use those as a basis, as to how the TPPN, and help us understand it, because when I read the sequences of those letters, it seems the commissioners were quite clear that it's a, it's a use group 6D. It's in a, as long as it's in a commercial and a manufacturing district, it's a use group 6D. Where it was missing is the fact that it's not permitted, 6D is not permitted in a residential, and therefore TPPN was created to allow it in residential, right? And so that is very different from the way the misreading of the, of the, of the plan examiner show was done. And that's not what I'm hearing here either, from you.
So if I understand your question correctly, you're saying if the intention or the basis for the TPPN was to address problems in residential districts regarding small cells, why was discussion around that time concerning manufacturing and commercial districts? Is that...
No, no, no. I think what I'm saying, as I'm looking at the letters from 1991, and others, it, clearly they're saying that the cellular tower is use group 6D, in a commercial. It's a 6D, you're allowed as of right in a C-zone and an M-zone.
Isn't that the one that's on a building?
Well, I think there was one with the separate, well, there was the 9X mobile commi, this is the one with the 9X mobile communication, and it considered it to be a public service establishment. So there were many other things that they factored in, in making the determination that it is, it qualifies as 6D.
In the commercial?
In commercial and manufacturing districts. Where it was not covered was in the residential, because that use is not permitted, 6, use group 6 is not permitted in residential. And that's why they recognized that if there was going to be inadequate coverage needed in residential districts, you needed to allow it, and how do you allow it? And therefore, in a TPPN, treat it as like a permitted obstruction in a building, within a certain envelope, within a certain parameters of limits. You are then an as-of-right permitted obstruction, the moment you're over those square footage, then you're a special permit.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, so I agree with that. So it seems to me that under the, if I were a practitioner, and I'm looking to install equipment of any kind that has to do with cellular, and I'm looking at the use groups, and I'm in a commercial district, I would just look at that and say, well, that seems to apply to me, it's telecommunications, I'd file an application, I might even, back in those days, self-certify it, because it seemed so obvious, and not know anything about the history, and legislative history, and all of that, because why, why should I? And, and then I would apply and file under use group 6D, and presumably get a permit, because it's in a commercial district, and I showed 6D, and the plan examiner said, oh, look, 6D, it's right there, so here you go, approved, here's your permit, build it, right? And then, as Commissioner Shanda said, that it was only in the residence districts where some kind of creative clarification was needed by DOB, because frankly, city planning wasn't helping you. So, so DOB needed to come up with a solution for this kind of rooftop accessory, non-accessory situation. So this idea that somehow the TPPN circumscribed commercial use in the commercial districts, I don't, I don't see that leap.
May I ask?
Sure.
Please state your name.
Felicia Miller, for Department of Buildings. The TPPN was written at the time when we had a big concern about how to get cellular antennas out to the residence. It wasn't a use that was allowed in the residence districts. That the specific concern was for putting these small cell antennas on top of roofs, and we, we knew that we had to put some limitations, so because otherwise, you know, to keep it outside of the ZARING resolution. But we wanted to keep it specifically small, incidental, and we came up with the limitations of the TPPN. All those limitations were, none of them were talking about towers. We were talking about small cell antennas that would be on the roof, and potentially related equipment on the roof, or inside the building. We also had as one criteria that it could be, if it's not on the building, it could be on a structure, and it has an independent use, but it must have an independent use, not be a tower that supports the antenna. An independent use example was a lawful sign. So if we're on a lawful sign, in the yard, in the outside yard, then it could be affixed to that, and again, would be limited in the height above, above that structure. So really, the only considerations at the time that that PPN was, the policy and procedure that was written, was about how to get it available in the residential districts. And then we said, if it doesn't fall under the TPPN limitations, the criteria set forth, then there's another avenue. It's not that we're saying that it's not possible, there's an avenue, but it's to go to BSA and get a special permit. And we spelt out specifically that provision as being an avenue under 2200 in a residence district. We weren't even thinking commercial and manufacturing districts at the time that we issued that. How it came, how it was allowed, whether it would be allowed, you know, in the building, if it was in or on a building, then it can fall under the TPPN, or as a, or as a communications equipment structure.
Right, but so that...
So we weren't seeing, I'm sorry, we just weren't seeing at that moment, the proliferation or the idea of having these towers go up.
No, but not, never mind towers. So even for a person to put communications equipment on the roof of a commercial building, the plan examiner didn't need to look at TPPN, because that has to do with residence districts. So instead, it didn't need, the applicant didn't need to make an argument that their use was an accessory used to the underlying building, or anything like that, they could just add to the CFO, say, that they're having telecommunications use group 6 on a roof, and the plan examiner would say, sure, go ahead, right?
If it's on a roof, in or on the building, we are still saying that it's a communication equipment structure.
No, 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 in a commercial district, that's, in a commercial district. So forget about the residence district, just forget that. I'm talking about now applying, because there are manufacturing districts far away from residence districts that also need coverage during that time period, right? That you would apply to put it in, like you said, in the backyard, or on the structure, and so on, and that would have just been, fill out a form, get an approval, as-of-right, use group 6, and the examiner would have no reason to say no, because it says right here, I can do it.
And as we've learned more, and studied this, and realized that there are more, and trying, more people trying to take advantage of putting them off the building, then we are now realizing that it is a limitation.
No, 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 but before, let's, let me stay back. Now I know you're doing that, but before, you weren't doing that. Before, commercial locations were receiving permits...
Well, we see some examples of that. I don't know whether we were always in all boroughs, I'm not sure about that. I, I, because mostly it was thought of as being, in or on a building, we have no problem with it being a communications equipment structure. It's when it's off the building, and it's a separate tower, that we then realize that there is no limitation, sufficient limitation for the height. Because if you take the lot coverage of the base of a, of a tower, like 10 by 10, or 5 by 5, whatever, you're going to end up having something that we think is out of context, not proper, and that, that couldn't have been what was being contemplated when the communications equipment structure provisions were, were written into the zoning resolution.
So what you're saying is, up until recently, you weren't confronted with these towers, and up until then, it was just these little cell equipments on the rooftops of commercial structures?
Obviously, there were some examples that we've now aware of, but I, we never considered it at a top-level position of the department until recently.
And if, if you read the TPPN, it actually even says, these specifications and requirements are based on the standards for cellular telephony at this time. So they're very specifically acknowledging that this is in flux, this industry, but now we are trying to grapple with it at this point in time.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Miller?
No, really helpful.
All right, any other questions from commissioners about this? Did you have more that you wanted to add?
No, I think that that pretty much sums it up.
Okay, are there any speakers?
I didn't get a response for my comment yesterday regarding the permitting effort back in 2018. That wasn't addressed in the submission by the DOB, and it wasn't addressed today as well.
Okay, but that's a question that you posed to the property owner, right?
No, to the, to the DOB, yes, to the...
So, okay, so the background on the permitting history, so, yeah, we would like, normally when we get these interpretive appeals, we have the entire back and forth between the applicant and the DOB, for up, that goes up until the initial issuance of the revocation, and then the applicant arguing back and forth with the DOB. We see that whole sort of chain of story, and instead here, we're not seeing any story. So we would like that background.
Even the applicant didn't submit the, I haven't seen it, the revocation notice, it wasn't submitted by the applicant, I guess. It was?
Yes.
Well, maybe that was, but we didn't see the, the argument for why they're wrong, or anything like that. Maybe, maybe the applicant said that they decided immediately to appeal, but still, there was something before that that happened. You applied for a permit, you got the permit, and there was a revocation, you know?
Right.
So we'd like to see the background. So if you wanted to add that. I also wanted to ask if there are any people in the audience who would like to speak on this issue, cellular towers? No? Okay.
Just briefly, we did include in the submission the revocation. The revocation was a fairly standard, just revocation, there wasn't a purpose or reason given. We did talk about today, the email exchanges that took place after that, and then I also alluded to having a, a meeting with technical affairs, but it wasn't a formal ZRD-1 process to get better understanding of where they were going, from some of these changes that they were discussing. And that's at the time where we said, okay, we'll apply again to the borough, file an ALT-1, we'll put in our memo about why we think this is use group 6D, not radio tower, and we'd like a determination on that. That's really the exchange, so there isn't a lot of back and forth. And because it was a use question, and DOB ultimately on that process in May concluded, no, we're going to classify this as radio tower special permit, that's why you don't see a lot of that back and forth, because there really wasn't a lot of back and forth, it was limited to this use question.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, so I think we can put this on for continued discussion, so, let me do this, appellate first, or something. So do we have EOB first, and then appellate? That's normally how it does? Or it's the other way around?
I think usually we do the appellate, EOB, and then appellate.
Appellate first, assertive lie, okay. A sur reply, okay. So.
How long do you need?
Two weeks. Two weeks.
Really?
I think there were a lot of questions asked, and we asked for a lot of background information about past cases. You may want to take a little bit.
Yeah. So what I really recommend, because you can't speak and take notes at the same time, is that you listen to the hearing and the review session as well, and go through everything that was said, so that makes sure that your submissions are complete and really responding to all the questions and anything else you can think of that will reinforce your argument. So, yeah, two weeks is not enough time to really give it a fair shake. So maybe a full month.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Can either of you or both of you can give me a list of all the various monopole structures that has been permitted over the years by date, so that we kind of have an idea when and whether it was as of right or through a special permit? Either of you, whoever has access to the data.
I may have to rely on DOB for that because their database, at least for our purposes, is harder to search for that. We have a lot of information we use to go back and find what we did find, but we can always foil it, but I would give them the data as a party.
And DOB also may have problems doing that. So to the extent you can provide us with examples to that, I mean, most of the time, it's the provider themselves, the sales company, that has their own examples. Sometimes they know of others in the neighborhood because they're working in the neighborhood, like that.
I do know that if we, just the open data for cellular antennas, I think it's some 6,400 results.
That's where I'd seen that data.
It may take some time to parse.
Yeah.
Because I would have to find the ones that were monopoles and then go back to the...
I see.
Yes.
Because I only saw that data.
Right.
But I couldn't extract from that whether it was monopole or on a building.
Right. That's what may take a little bit longer to do.
Yeah, so I don't want DOB to, you know, in other words, if there's 6,400 and you have to go through every single one, and there's no search criteria to be able to use to find monopole, then, you know, you can use some examples between, in your sort of reasonable search approach, but the idea of going one by one through 6,400, 6,500 applications seems unreasonable.
I was hoping you could be there.
Yeah, but that depends on how open data works. We often try to do these searches, and there's things that we can't find, right? So if it shows up as filed as a monopole, that's one thing, but if it's not...
We'll do our best.
Okay, so.
Okay. Submission date for the appellate, April 1st. DOB, how long do you need? Two or three weeks?
Three weeks, please.
Okay. Submission date, April 22nd. And for reply, one or two weeks?
Maybe I should take the two weeks based on the information.
Two weeks.
Okay. Submission, May 5th, or, excuse me, May 6th, for a continued hearing on June 2nd.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Short ones, I just want to make sure that we don't keep going over.
Special order calendar, item number 3, 24503BZ, 16011, Willets Point, Queens. No, you don't need to...
Good morning, Maria Papasavostos, on behalf of the applicant.
So you wanted an adjournment, what we didn't, the reason that you couldn't appear today is?
It's my co-counsel, Juan Reyes, he's in Texas today and was unavailable. So when we went back to our desk, we realized that and tried to move it that same day, and unfortunately, weren't able to, so.
Okay. So when's our nearest, but are you ready with your submission?
Yes, we did have a question that we were running by executive director that we wanted to go through to finalize our submission, but we were ready to go quickly. Yes.
April 7th, 3/18. Yeah, that's good.
Okay. In that case, submission, March 18th, for a continued hearing, April 7th.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you.
Item number 4, 32205BZ, 6969, okay, 6969 Main Street, the Queens, Queens? Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, to respond honestly to the board member's questions? Please sign and go.
I'm Lisa Fullader from Eric Palatnick, PC. I brought the construction manager again with me, but we are building and as of right, a pre-61, just the interior renovations to an existing building. That's all that's happening. They couldn't do the funding anymore, so they can't pursue the...
So that existing building that we see on the photograph, all of that building is pre-61, and none of it was going to be legalized by the prior variance?
As far as I know, no, because I confirm this multiple times, because I don't want to relinquish someone's variance. But when they confirm with me that they don't need any of those waivers, but I asked, do you need these waivers? And they said, no, we're just a pre-61 building, and we're just doing interior.
Right, you asked the architect.
I asked the architect, and him as well.
Yes, and there was no enlargement of the existing footprint.
Please state your name for the record.
Yeah, state your name.
Robert Fashi, Fashi Construction with General Contractors. There was no enlargement of the existing footprint of the building, no new foundations, no additions, nothing. It's strictly an interior renovation.
Okay, here we go. So I don't know if we, sorry?
How about a motion to withdraw, and then we can issue a letter of no objection, not objecting to relinquishing the variance?
Okay.
That would be good. Obviously, what we're concerned about is that, going back to DOB for the CFO, that it gets red flagged because there's a BSA on it.
Right, understood. Okay. Because our process normally is, when you want to relinquish a variance, you just write a letter to the BSA and say, we're giving up the variance, but because you came here for an extension and amendment and so on, we need to withdraw the application and then relinquish. Okay. So for a motion to withdraw.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaveta?
Aye.
Thank you. Application's been withdrawn. Item number 5, 18309BZ, 1405th Avenue, Manhattan. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, and to respond honestly to the board member's questions?
I do.
Okay.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Frederick A. Becker. We attended your review session yesterday. In response to language for the waivers discussed, we submitted a revised statement of fact, which I believe addresses the substantial prejudice and extreme hardship, and also provided proofs of continuous occupancy.
Okay, did any, do you want to tell us what it is? Because I think it was submitted when?
It was yesterday afternoon submitted.
Yeah, so 3:05 is when?
Right, we basically, I changed the language. I had used the word was detrimental. I changed the language to a substantial hardship, and...
Can you read, just because I don't know if anyone's had a chance to actually look at this? Can you tell us where it is?
And I'm just looking now, and for some reason, I see it was not included, I'm sorry, wrong file, that's why it's not in that file. Sorry.
I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't...
So on pages nine and 10 of the revised statement dated March 20th, of March 2020, we mentioned that there'd be...
March 2nd of 2020.
No, March, it's March, wait, we submitted, we submitted it on March 2nd, but the statement just says revised March 2020, it doesn't have a March 2nd.
Oh, March 2020, okay.
Right, but there was a cover letter which was dated March 2nd, and it basically says on pages nine and 10, that for the instant extension of the term application we denied, it would result in substantial prejudice and extreme hardship. The facility has been operating for more than 10 years at this location. They have expended more than $1 million to construct and maintain it. We would be required, under a long-term lease, to maintain, to pay our lease, even if we were not occupying the space under New York state law, and there would be substantial prejudice and extreme hardship. And we attached invoices from the landlord from 1-1, 2018, to 12-1, 2018, from 1-1, 2019 to 11-1, 2019, which included, would show continuous occupancy and rent payments. And this covered the period from November 1st of 2018 through the expiration of the grant in January 2019, when we filed the application.
Okay. I'm looking at 1,400 retail owner LLC that has, I guess, it says automatic charge, so I guess those are the rent bills?
The first document was rent bills or related, which shows through that. Then we have the entire expenses for the year, 240,000 on the next page, through, for the period ending December 31, 2018. We then have real estate taxes starting of 1-1, 2019 through 6-1, 2019 for the following year, and then we have rent charges of, from 1-1, 2019 through 11-1, 2019.
Okay, and then turn to the waiver, it says this application also includes a request to waive section 107.3B2 of the rule?
Right, which is what I was told was the correct section.
Yes.
Which we had prior.
Okay, so that looks, okay, right? So then the only thing was whether we, I didn't see whether we have final from the fire department. Fire department had a letter from December, maybe we just need clarification on whether they're... Okay.
John Daly, Fire Department?
The department has no further objection on this application, so we issued a conditional letter of no objection. We will continue our inspection process and...
Great.
I know it's difficult to get their sign-offs and things like that from the Department of Buildings, and fire alarm, and PA permit. We'll grant them some time to do it. Non-compliant will request a complaint, compliance hearing.
Okay, great, thank you. Are there any speakers on this application? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion, any comments from the board? I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant on condition of compliance with the terms of the fire department.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaveta?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and again, two years, please, for the CFO.
Yes. Oh, is this another one of those wacky CFO situations?
Well, to get a new CFO.
Eight-story mixed-use building. So in other words, a letter of no objection, a TCO or a CFO within the two years.
Right, just, one year is never enough.
Yeah. No, but I've been changing sort of the parameter because this is a large building that may have all kinds of problems. It's not the PCE's fault, et cetera.
It's appreciated. Thank you very much.
All right, so a motion to grant on that.
Listen.
We already did that? Oh, we talked after? Yeah, yeah, right.
Sorry for interrupting.
Item number 6, new case.
Wait a second, wait a second, is 1205, five-minute, 10-minute break? 10-minute break? Oh, okay.
Sorry, Fred.
12:15.
He has two more cases, back to back.
Okay, right, but...
Ladies and gentlemen, back on the record, item number 7, 10-LAPZ, 8668 Bradhurst Avenue, Manhattan. Raise your right hand. Do you...
Six.
Bradhurst?
Six is...
Oh, on six, I'm sorry.
Six.
I had checked that. Item number 6, 32298BZ, 300 West 125th Street, Manhattan.
Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, and to respond honestly to the board member's questions?
I do. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Frederick A. Becker. We attended the review session yesterday. The comments that I have are as follows. I am a little confused over, you said revise the first floor plan to show egress to the street. I'm looking at page...
There's more than one egress route? I think there are two fire stairs?
This, I'll check, but I, the only space that we have is, I'll take a look, but if you're looking for the other fire stair, but we...
Go to the second floor. Yeah, so...
EP2 is what I'm looking at.
Yeah, so it shows two routes of egress. It shows stair, I can't see that, stair A and stair C or something like that?
I'm sorry.
Stair A, if you go to the floor plan for the PCE, it shows two routes of egress.
On EP3, right, I see that.
So if you're using a second route, which you need to if you're, well, which you need to, then you need to show how it gets to the street.
Okay, so you want the other, the fire stairs as well?
Yeah.
Okay, that's easy enough done.
That should be something standard, so you're not, you don't end up having to come back. All your plans, your first floor plan should always show how the staircases get to the street.
Got it. I'll tell the architect. We saw there was a typo on the square footage on the analysis, the transposed numbers, we will correct that. There is, yes, it turns out the basketball court was in fact never built. We will revise the plan to show what in fact is in that basketball court area on page EP3, and we'll revise the statement accordingly. And we will provide interior photographs of the various areas, so you understand what's going on. And we, in the future, we're going to now provide interior photographs, public everything.
Yeah.
As to cover all...
It's easier, path of least resistance.
Yes, no, no, now with this and the other one, so we'll do that as a sort of pro forma.
And I don't know if fire, I can't get it on my computer, fire department already submitted?
We got it, yeah.
Empty, and I don't have no objection.
They said no objection, okay. It wasn't a conditional though, right? Not a conditional, it was a letter of no objection, right? Okay. All right, when can you get this for, are there any speakers on this? Okay.
I can provide it in approximately two to three weeks.
Oh, okay.
Just to be on the safe side.
Submission, April 1st, for a continued hearing, April 21st.
Got it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 7, 10-08BZ, 8668 Bradhurst Avenue, Manhattan. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, and to respond honestly to the board member's questions?
I do.
Did the board see the fire department's conditional letter of no objection?
Okay, so that was it, the conditional.
Conditional letter of no objection.
Right.
Okay, we attended, again, the review session yesterday. I will review the statement regarding the commercial versus residential uses. With regard to the number of stories, the, I looked the most recent certificate of occupancy, which was issued after the last grant, lists 10 floors, so 10 floors is correct.
Okay.
So we'll, that's all right. The access to the cellar, you had asked about grade, I was a little, we do show, we have on the plans, there is a handicap lift at grade. It may, it's a little small on page EP2, where the entrance is on West 145th Street.
I think the confusion is, it's labeled cellar plan?
Right.
Right? And so it's actually, I think it's more because it's on a slope, right? So it's not really a cellar?
I think there's a combination of the...
Yeah, so it's kind of...
I think more...
It's confusing because it sounds like you're entering on the cellar and you can't be, right? So you're entering from grade, so that needs to be clarified on the drawing, because it looks like, yeah, you don't enter from cellars.
Okay, right. What this is, it is on a slope, and the majority of the space is with below grade, so it gets termed cellar from a zoning perspective, but that part is at grade, so it is a first...
Or basement, we don't know.
Well, it was more than 50% below. That's, that's what I was told.
But anyway, so you need to clarify, so normally you do these kind of part plans to clarify that, right?
I have no, we have no problem doing that.
Yeah, so just do that, because we want to see that you're entering from grade, from the sidewalk, onto a little sort of landing, then you go on that little lift.
Right.
And then what happens?
Then you go, if you follow EP2, we show a three-foot egress path, and the egress path goes all the way to the top of the page, and it goes into an elevator.
So that thing at the, see, I think that's what I was, does it say?
Where it says a five, it says five foot diameter, we'll just label it as an elevator.
Yeah, so that's the thing, because that could have been a chase.
Okay, we'll just, we'll label it as an elevator.
Okay.
On EP2, we will give you a larger egress plan to show the fire stairs, as with the last one, I understand that, and we will provide interior photographs.
Excellent, okay.
That's it.
And, I need to prove continuous use, and it's a, okay, good. All right, are there any speakers on this? So why don't we put it on for the same schedule?
Submission April 1st for continued hearing April 21st.
Thank you very much.
Item number eight, 5813A, for Wyman Place, Staten Island. You don't have to be sworn in. No, it's an A case, not yet.
Good afternoon, yeah, afternoon, Jay Goldstein for the applicant. We attended yesterday's review session, like the, I have the project architect with me, we can discuss the project and then provide some clarity in terms of pictures and, and plans after that. Just at the outset, I'm curious which plans the board was reviewing or looking at when they were discussing my case yesterday. We have the plans dated January 14th, 2020, which may, make no reference to the 7711, and our floor area and calculations don't include the 7711.
Oh, okay.
Prior iteration did have it, we took it off in our most recent submission when we responded to DOT, we corrected that as well.
So the section, the portion of the site that falls in the M is no longer relevant?
We're not including it in our calculations, we've basically.
Yeah, but you can't have residence use in the.
It's not, the residents aren't, were never proposed to be in that area, they were just using the floor area as part of their calculations. We're not including the manufacturing district as part of our calculations, only the residential district.
Where's the M's district boundary? Oh, M district boundary's in the middle.
Middle of the street.
Of the street, okay, so you've taken out the calculation of that.
Right, the calculations were never there, we kept an old note in, and we took the old note out.
If you can just, it's still not very clear from the graphics.
I'm going to change the plan to clarify, I'm going to clean up the plan to make it a little more legible.
Yeah.
Understood that comment, I'll, I'll take care of that, that'll be part of the.
And you're not using any floor area from the M district?
No.
Right, you cannot.
It's not part of our calculations, not part of any, any of our considerations. It is a loss of 2,000 square feet of floor area based on the lot.
But you've gained a lot of.
But we're gaining it on the other end, but it's part of the consideration when we did buy those.
Got it.
It makes it a little easier. As the board noted, this is a, an SOC, but it is a much larger building than what was previously approved. The building itself though, the lot and lot area still has a lot of hardships that are, contain specific to this property, that required us to, in designing this building, even on the larger lot, keep it the way it is. So just at the outset, again, I'll clean up the statement effects, but there are 26 spaces, so if you're looking at the plan, even on the old plans, I'm not sure actually, but you look at the January plans, there's a curb cut, a 12-foot curb cut along Silverton Terrace. If you go on that, that curb cut is actually 10 feet lower than the curb cut you see on Church Lane. So when you drive in from Silverton Terrace, you see the first eight cars.
Oh, so that.
You'll, you'll drive straight underneath a platform that'll have an additional eight spaces for 16 spaces at grade on that level. When you come in from Church Lane, that curb and base plane on that area is 10 feet higher than the other side. So you'll have seven cars and then an additional three that are under the building, under a cantilevered portion of the building. So you'll have your 26 spaces, and again, I think there is a mistake in my, in my statement effects, but I'll clarify it, but that's how the parking for the 26 spaces is achieved on the site. Specifically.
You state there are 35 spaces though.
In my statement of facts.
So it's not correct?
And in your.
Right, originally we had 35 spaces, it didn't really work from the maneuverability, so I submitted the plans, I neglected to change that in my statement of facts.
So what is the total number of parking spaces you're proposing?
26, and 23 are required.
23 are required?
So it's not one per unit, what's the rule?
We're required to have 23.
It's .75 or something?
I thought it's one to one.
I thought it's one to one too, so, I know that's what the community board wanted, I don't know what.
66% is the required parking. We tried to achieve 35 spaces, it doesn't, didn't work with the turning on the site. So, and again, with regard to the, the actual, so with regard to the, that's the 7711 comment and the parking comment. With regards to the comment of the street trees, we are proposing planting on our side of the property, however, street trees as required by zoning, I believe, have to be on the city property, they have to be on the city street, and there is no city street here to allow us to do sufficient number of street planting. There's only a five-foot sliver along Silverton, which doesn't give enough space for tree planting, and that's why the DOT note, which we put on, which was part of the prior, the DP note, which was part of, part of the prior approval as well, says that tree, street tree planting for compliance sake will be off-site.
Yeah, but it's, there's a five-foot strip because you're opting, given the, the street widening and all of that, to only provide a five-foot sidewalk as opposed to adding the normal depth. This is the part where I, I have a problem with the waiver.
For a street tree per zoning, I'm informed, that it has to be on city property. So even if we gave street trees and planting, which we propose on our side of the, on our property, it doesn't meet the requirement of street trees for zoning.
Okay.
So I'll show, we, we will show the planting that we're proposing on our site, but it still won't comply with street tree planting as defined by zoning.
Mm-hmm.
So I can show you, and I'll clarify on my, on my changed plans, to show the, the planting that we propose on our property, and the beautification measures on our property, but I, I don't believe, and I can so, I can cite to the section, that it'll satisfy the street tree requirement.
Okay, but, but we'll landscape as if there are street trees.
I'll let, yeah, 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 we're proposing landscaping, and I'll show landscaping, and I can, you know, discuss it at a greater length, but that, the question yesterday.
To be clear, trees. So, so that's what I'm trying to say, is this waiver, it's, it's an opportunity to avoid a lot of normal zoning controls, and one of them is that because the property line is going right up into the kind of strange relationship with Church Lane and Wyman, it's a way to avoid a usual urban approach to a development, it's a large building now, right? It was different when it was a little skinny thing. Now you've got a large building, and, and you're taking all of these area ways, which cut into the pedestrian way, and which normally, for which you would normally need a revocable consent, and instead of taking that out of the floor plate of the building, if that's what you really want to do, or you have courtyards, instead, you know, using area ways in the courtyards, it's taking away from the public's experience of the sidewalk.
So we'll show it, I'll show you the proposed planting and trees that we can fit based on the size of the sidewalks. The reason.
That's the size of the sidewalks, you're providing.
Not the size of the, right, the reason the building is designed the way it is, and the reason for the need of the building the way it was, was designed just to maximize the building on this lot. Building, which I was going to get into, but the building has a change in grade of 20, almost 20 feet, 18 and a half feet, from the top right corner of Silverton Terrace and Wyman Place to Church Lane, to the corner of Church Lane where the curb cut, or where that, that little corner is. Designing a building that was, you know, one level or excavating so one level, and maximizing at a taller building and reducing the footprint of the building, wasn't feasible because of the change in grade, and it's something that I can demonstrate, but the change in grade and the, and the capped height on this, in this zoning district.
Mm-hmm.
So we wouldn't have been able to create a, a smaller footprint with a taller building and still maximize or still achieve our floor area that, that were allowed, without the manufacturing district. And it's something I can show you illustratively to kind of bolster the point. Furthermore, we're required to have a 30-foot rear yard equivalent, that's the back line, the back line of the building where the cars are parked, that's the rear yard equivalent.
Right.
So we couldn't pull the building further back and maintain the building footprint and just pull it back. So without.
But you could make the building smaller and comply with the, again, this is a problem I'm having. According to this, for me, it sets a bad precedent about how these GCL 35s are used to just avoid standard height and setback regulations as to the street widening line, because you could easily build this building, holding whatever their front yards requirements are from the street widening line and comply, but instead, just for what looks like to me is only a three-foot difference, which is not how these are intended, most of the time we see a building, you know, a site where the street drives right through the center of the site, and there's no way to develop the site absent a GCL waiver.
If we had to comply with the adapted widening line, we'd require 18 feet of front yard from the adapted widening line. So it wouldn't be pull the building back three feet to meet the adapted widening line, it would be 18 feet or, essentially pull the building back as proposed, 22 feet. That'd be a loss of almost 8,000 square feet of building. So that's why the, the building is really trying to maximize in a way, and it's not, you know, a full building of three stories, it's broken up in a way, it doesn't show it well on this plot plan, but as mentioned yesterday, if we, you know, in this situation for sure, GCL 35s, you don't generally see it, but in this situation, we can kind of show what we're proposing in terms of a, of an elevation, to show that it's broken up a little bit, it's not exactly just a straight wall on Wyman.
So it's not so much to get into the aesthetics of your building? We often ask, show us what the as-of-right building would be that had to comply.
So I'm going to, right, in GCLs, I've only ever seen the plot plan, and I've only ever given the plot plan, I said in this case, we'll, we'll amp this up a little bit to show you what we're proposing, to really demonstrate it, and demonstrate the required front yard if we were to comply with, with the street widening.
So show an as-of-right building?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
And it would, like I mentioned, I think this to Commissioner Shabeta's point, it would result, without the GCL 35 waiver, would result in a loss of 8,000 buildable square feet, which is a sizable, especially with a project on such a significant slope, is a sizable amount of square footage to lose. So the GCL waiver, although it's a larger building that was originally contemplated, the necessity is there based on the uniqueness of this site. The site uniqueness before was, really a lot of it was that it was split between the M-zone and the R-zone, we've done away with that, but you, you still have the site uniqueness of the slope in the property and the requirements of the front yard, and the requirements of the rear yard equivalent, and the height limitations, which, which dictated the building that we're proposing. So I can show you the as-of-right building.
Okay.
And I'll show you illustratively the true, the street tree planting that we're proposing on our site, not the zoning street tree, but the street trees and beautification on our site, and explain in further detail the setbacks and the, and the yards that we're requesting.
But I still think if you were applying, if you were treating the street line as having moved to where you are, the.
Move to what?
To, having moved the street line to where you're proposing to move it, because it's not where the widening line is, then there would be, the measurement of the front yard would be off of the sidewalk, because the sidewalk is normally city property, right? And the property line doesn't begin until you're done with the sidewalk.
So you're talking the extra, the extra five feet?
Yeah, I'm talking about giving a real front yard, so it seems to be complying with the zoning in the district.
I can, I can definitely explore it. The, this iteration did actually set the building back from the original proposal, we're eight feet further back than was originally.
But the original proposal was a 35-foot deep.
I understand, but we did.
You can't compare this very large building.
When we designed it, we did take that into consideration of now we have the opportunity to pull it back, so that we're not giving a 10-foot including the five feet, we're giving 18 feet. So it did take it into consideration, we can explore the other options and see how it plays out with the building configuration.
No, let's, let's, let's phrase it another way, you have to do it. I don't want it explored, and then you give me an explanation for why you can't do it, you have to do it. Right now, what you're showing is a building that doesn't look like other buildings in an R4 district because of its relationship to what the public will perceive as a street. And you're crowding the street by not pulling back and the area ways and so on. You need to treat the sidewalk, the end of the public sidewalk, as your property line and pull back that way, and not explore it, just do it, and bring your architect the next time.
Architect's here.
Okay, good.
We had the architect so they can hear it. I brought the architect to make sure that I didn't miss out on my case, but this is, you know, we did have him. So, understood. I think that was.
And the area ways can't be as if they're revocable consent in city property, that's the other part. It can't be reducing the depth of the sidewalk. If you want to be providing area ways on your own property, which is the standard, I mean, this kind of thing where you have occupancy down lower, it's a very old concept, and it's always done on your own property, not on city property, right? So it has to be within, after the edge of the sidewalk, then that's when you start your area way. Okay, whatever the, right, because, because that's your property line.
I'm confused though, because we have it, oh, you're talking about on the side streets, on Church and on Silverton.
I'm talking about, yeah, on all the streets, that you can't impose on the sidewalk experience with your airway, area way.
So I don't believe that they are in, within the sidewalks. We provide the five-foot side yard, sidewalk along Church, and it's after the sidewalk, and on Silverton as well, there's a five-foot sidewalk in the gray hatch area, and then the area way is on our property. So it's not within the sidewalks, and it's not a revoc, it wouldn't be revocable consent.
And the five feet, that's what DOT said, five feet is enough for a sidewalk? Is that what's standard here?
So that was the.
Do you join up with sidewalks?
That was the request under the prior application, DOT is reviewing it still, we've, they haven't mentioned anything in their letter about, in their comments to me, they didn't mention anything about the sidewalk. They wanted clarification on a couple other points, which we did, but they have not mentioned the sidewalk, they were satisfied, I believe, at the five-foot sidewalk.
So does this sidewalk join, join up with any sidewalk on Silverton or any sidewalk on, what's that called, Church?
I don't believe so, I think the reason for the five-foot sidewalk is because there was no sidewalk on Church and no sidewalk on Wyman. The sidewalk on Silverton is city property, it's a five-foot sidewalk for, for city property.
Okay.
It's not on our lot.
Mm-hmm.
But I think that five foot, the request was to provide a sidewalk that otherwise wasn't there.
Right.
Wyman and Church didn't have sidewalks, so they wanted us to provide five-foot of concrete so that there is a sidewalk.
And just so I understand, on Silverton, the five-foot is on the city's.
Yeah, it's on the city's.
Property. Inside of the widening line, if there is, inside of the street line?
Yeah, so it's outside of our property.
It kind of goes into the street.
At the tip where, where Silverton and Church and Wyman meet?
Say again? No, 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 so, away from the intersection, so the sidewalk kind of zigs in. I mean, the.
You have a bowl bow, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the bowl bow. The width of the street therefore narrows from your property line all the way to Wyman. That's, is it beautification?
I.
I'm just trying to understand that.
I don't understand the question, I apologize.
I'm sorry, so maybe, can you?
You can.
So.
Oops. What was that?
Sorry, sorry, sorry. So my question is with regards to this bulge, so if the Silverton sidewalk, the existing sidewalk, so it bulges in, sorry, the sidewalk.
Is it a, it looks like there's a bowl bow, see, there's this.
Oh, I can confirm, I don't know.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to understand that.
Yeah, I can definitely confirm, I'm not, it may just been a, you know, at the end of, at the end of the picture, it may have just been a road line, I can find out.
I think that's the question that Chair had, was is it a continuation of an existing sidewalk?
Oh, that, that's, that was the question?
That's one of them.
I thought you meant the, within the street. All right, I'll find out.
No, my, my concern always on all of these kinds of applications is that the sidewalk, it makes sense, you know, that you're walking along the sidewalk and you're not automatically forced to take a sharp right and a sharp left in order to accommodate the developer, right? right?
I can see. A lot of times in these streets, there actually were no sidewalks, and as the streets get developed with properties, they create new sidewalks. So you'll have no sidewalk, and then you do zig onto a sidewalk. I don't know the condition on the street, I have to check, but that may actually be the condition, but it's something that is, you know, we're creating a sidewalk to create a safer condition, and the properties, as they get developed, they'll create it as well.
Right, so Wyman, I know, doesn't have a sidewalk, but I don't know about Church.
Neither does Church.
So Silveira, when I'm looking at it in Google photo, it doesn't, it doesn't look like it has a sidewalk. If you look up-
What do you mean? It does. Yeah, it does. On the left, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a sidewalk.
I don't think it's a sidewalk.
I'll clarify.
That's considered, I think, side, see that little place in front of the bottom steps? That's considered a sidewalk. Okay, well, anyway, he'll clarify.
I'll clarify. And maybe that there are, because there are new houses that are west of us, so they may have to put a sidewalk in when they did their construction. I can clarify.
Okay. Can you also, because I'm not really sure what DOT is reviewing, can you provide a builder's pavement plan?
I did.
You did? You did?
Believe so. Hold on.
Maybe-
Yeah, I did.
You did?
I did. I think that was part of my initial submission. So they have that, and we-
But maybe that's the thing that we can't read very well. Maybe that's what that is.
It's possible. That actually, I don't know. I submitted a builder's pavement plan. That was item number 23, that I submitted, exhibit 23, right before the RP 602. I'm pretty sure you guys disregard my number.
Oh, okay, there is one. Let's see, but that's the original, no?
No, it's a new one.
Oh, okay. It was approved when? No? Oh, well, it's dated, well, the drawings dated 10, 2019. Okay.
It was reviewed and approved and submitted with our application.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So, and the status of Church is what?
It's not a final mapped street. Corporation Opinion Council from 85. It's on our plans also.
Okay, yeah, it's a CCO street.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
So just as a matter of housekeeping, I submitted the proof of initial service to Ms. Matias. I think everyone got it?
Yep, we have, yeah.
Okay, and DOT and FDN, why we're still waiting on.
Right, okay.
Quick question, not on Chair. So if he's reconfiguring the building, or setting it more back?
Yeah.
Do we want to have DOT wait to see that, or have DOT respond now and again?
Well, I would, yeah, so, once he submits the revised drawings, we'll submit to DOT, but I also want them to look at the sidewalk width question, okay? Because we didn't get a specific comment about sidewalk.
Right, I'd also like to just see their comments on the original plans, because they may have others that I want to incorporate into my amended plans, so that we can do it again.
So they had comments that you responded to on January 21. DOT had comments.
Right, and so they hadn't-
And so DOT hasn't finalized, correct.
They haven't finalized.
Yeah, that's true. So you could tell them, please wait until we receive the-
But again, that's what I'm saying. If they're going to issue comments on the current amended, some of those comments may pertain to the future amended, so let's wait.
All right, so, okay, so let's do a double thing, okay?
My guess.
Only because, I know, it's just, it'll, otherwise, we're going to submit our amended plans back to DOT and start the process all over. I think it'll save time.
But I think when you speak to DOT, if you could just have them look specifically at sidewalk widths as part of their current review.
Okay.
Because that'll hold no matter what. Okay.
And fire department needs 30 days.
All right. Are there any speakers on this one? Okay.
DOT is going to take a little while.
Yeah.
Is April 28th available, or is it not?
Yeah, but if we think about, so DOT hasn't responded yet to yours, right?
Do they, well, do they indicate when they would have a response?
Well, let's say-
The project manager was out, and then I told the director.
Right, so, you responded on January 21, so that would be soon, arguably, that you'd get the first response.
I think I responded within a week, so it was a pretty quick turnaround on our end.
No, but DOT isn't just working on your project.
No, I know, we usually do 30 days, 30 days, 30 days.
Right, but so I'm saying, you responded on the 21st of January.
Mm-hmm.
Let's just say their response is coming soon, because it's 30, more than 30 days, right? So sometime in early March, you'll get a response, then you have to respond to that, and make your submission in response to that, right?
Right.
And then, another 30 days, so it's, say, at least two months.
Oh.
For submission.
Or 29, is that what it is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Submission, April 29th, for continued hearing, May 19th.
Let me just check, May 19th.
So in terms of the clarification on the drawings, the reason we're having so much trouble reading them is because they're like a photocopy.
I'm getting rid of it. I'm scratching. I'm sorry, Kurt, it was 3:19 for the hearing?
April 29th and May 19th.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Appeal, oh, sorry, none of appeals can. Item number 9, 17514BZ1162, Broadway, Manhattan. Please assign Alex. And then raise your right hands. Everybody raise your right hands. Do affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony for this board, and respond as any form of member questions. Go.
Good afternoon. Ally Carrery of Greenberg Trarig, applicant and land use counsel for the property owner. We attended yesterday's review session and appreciate the board's comments regarding the kind of predicament that the owner is in with respect to the as-of-right uses at the site, and inability now to provide hotel use without a special permit. We would like to respond to the board's specific comments and questions. One was that our drawings show the rear yard area for the proposed scenario as non-complying. The board's correct that's an error, and will correct that and resubmit. There was a question about the difference in the ground floor plans between the as-of-right and the proposed, resulting in different floor areas for the lobby use versus the retail use, the restaurant use. The reason for this is actually that the location of the core differs between the two scenarios. Because of the setback in the as-of-right scenario, the core in that scenario is set back a bit farther from the street to allow for a little more open area along Broadway. And if you compare BSA 05 and BSA 13 for the ground floor plans, you'll see that the dividing line between the lobby space and the restaurant space is right behind where the passenger elevators are located, and because those elevators are in slightly different locations, the, you know, the maximum restaurant area is a little smaller in the as-of-right scenario.
With respect to that, I'm just curious, not that this is what you're going to do exactly on the interior when you finally do an interior, but you have this lob, so it's an office building, which doesn't require the same kind of lobby as a hotel, and the restaurant, which is actually your retail space, is all the way at the back. And so the knowledge of the existence of this restaurant is quite odd, right? You sort of, it's almost like a secret restaurant at the back, like Bohemia or something like that, right? Where only if you're in the know, do you go to this little restaurant, as opposed to have a street front.
I'm not completely sure what the plan is for that occupation.
But it's affecting the square footage of the retail space, because the lobby isn't rentable, but the retail is.
Yeah.
So maybe someone could speak to that in your group.
Do you have any thoughts on that, Tom?
Just, please state your name. Sorry, I'm Tom Lewis from Moore Sageway Architects. We haven't really planned out the use for the lobby, other than to say it's a lobby. So we've kept the use at the rear of the floor to be at the rear, because it'd be connected to a kitchen, but we, and we sort of used that to the maximum allowable for that space, and the rest, the front end is just used as lobby right now. We haven't planned it out any further.
What do you mean, the maximum allowable?
I'd have to go back to it, but the way that I remember it was there actually was a maximum allowable size that we could do for a restaurant on that space, and that we had used it. I'd have to go back and dig a little deeper. It's been a while since I've looked at what that was about.
Because it's commercial, the whole building is commercial floor area, so it's not a floor area issue.
That's great. I'd have to go back and look at it. I don't remember what our logic was for that.
Because when I look at other buildings of similar width, well, that was the other question, about the scissor stair, right?
Right.
Usually, you have just a narrow access to the, to the office floors, so that it gives a lot of frontage and direct entrance to the restaurant from the street.
Right.
The reason this is relevant for me, anyway, is that now you have more rentable retail space, which affects the financials. No?
I mean, it might, yes, you're right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there was a, there was a reason, it's been a while since I looked at it from that perspective. The restaurant had a maximum size. I don't remember exactly what that was. And that's why the restaurant is where it is. We could only fit so much restaurant on the floor plate. Again, I'd have to go back and determine why that was.
That sounds like it's relevant to a hotel.
Understood. There were, there were, there are applications for both, and I don't remember exactly what it was. That's my, the first I can take that, but I do remember that there was actually a reason for the restaurant not taking up the entire space.
We can take a look and respond to this further in writing. I mean, it looks to me, you know, I think, just driving the small width of the site, you know, there is, there does need to be some access to where the passenger elevators and stairs are located.
No, no, sure, but if you look at other buildings of this type, they don't give such generous lobbies. Most of the time in these buildings, you go through this corridor that gets you to the elevator, and it's that, right?
Yeah, I think part of it may also be that if you take the corridor, because of the narrow width of the building, I'm looking at it now, because of the narrow width of the building, if we took a six-foot corridor back to the elevators, you'd be left with about six feet for the restaurant itself. So the, when you put a wall down the middle of that open space to allow for an actual lobby for the elevator core, you don't have any real spa, any usable real space that could be used for a restaurant leftover, because it ends up being about a six-foot wide space. It's a 25-foot wide lot total with a 10-foot core, so you've really got a very limited leftover space for a restaurant lobby, or, excuse me, a restaurant use in addition to a lobby for the office building. I think that was the driver for it. Does that make sense?
Unless it's somewhat possible to push the core behind the restaurant. So your corridor goes alongside the restaurant, and then bubbles out behind the restaurant. That's the only option I could think of. Or, you know, it's a, see this a lot, kind of these front-back restaurants, where it's got a front, front room, and then behind is a kitchen, or a front room, and then another room, and then behind is a kitchen.
It's just such a narrow space. If we've got a 10-foot core, we've got essentially 15 feet left. We've got to maintain a minimum of a five-foot lobby to get through there for 88 clearances, which means you sort of have, at maximum, you have 10 foot leftover for retail space or restaurant space. And we can certainly look at that as an option.
Do you have to have two elevators in this building?
From an elevator study, from a code point of view, no, but from a usability study for class A office space, yes.
Okay.
And we looked at that in depth.
The other question was, which may not be legal, but we have another application for another project where they're using a scissor stair in this situation.
Right. So scissor stairs, we would like to have used, because this stair takes up substantially more space than a scissor stair.
Right.
Scissor stairs really only permitted in residential uses.
Okay.
And so that's really the reason. We would like to have used a scissor stair, trust me, because it really would have saved a lot of space, but not applicable here.
Okay. Thank you. That addresses the scissor stair question that I was going to address. And then, I wanted to address Commissioner Sheta's request that we provide an update on the extent of below-grade work that has occurred at the site. So the prior existing two-story building had a cellar, and that building has been demolished to the cellar slab. So the current actual grade of the site is about 10 feet below grade, and our construction cost estimates assumed an excavation depth of 12 feet 8 inches for the proposed cellar, assuming basically a vacant site at grade. The estimated excavation cost in both scenarios was about $90,000, 89, 670. Neither scenario includes demolition costs, which were previously undertaken by the owner, as kind of detailed in our analysis, in our statement of facts. Those costs ended up being higher than anticipated, but we didn't seek to include them in our analysis, because we didn't want to go into a special, you know, costs of foundations analysis. We wanted to keep it consistent with the previous variance analysis. So, and for more color, in reality, we're actually excavating deeper to about 15 feet below grade, which is to match the neighbor buildings' foundations. So the actual new excavation that will occur is going to be about a third of what's represented in the construction costs. That would be a savings of about $55,000 for both scenarios. Adding this to the as-of-right scenario doesn't make it feasible, and we don't believe it results in a windfall for the proposed scenario, especially since we're not including any demolition costs that were already taken. And as Jessica Corus will explain in a moment, the cap rate that we used was 5%, which was on the very low end of the range of cap rates for office buildings, so that supports that we are seeking the minimum variance.
Just to clarify, I didn't ask about the status of construction because of the cost, or I didn't even-
I'm sorry, you have to speak up more into the mic.
Sure. I didn't even look at the cost that's currently submitted. The reason for that, because this cost is submitted previously with the previous variance, and they were checked, somebody looked at them and blessed them, so I haven't looked at them.
Okay. Yeah. Just wanted to explain that although there are differences between submitted costs and the actual conditions, we think it kind of balances that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica?
You know, before you ask a question, I just wanted to say, I went by the site yesterday, and your fence has been dislodged, and actually is kind of gaping open in the front, so you may have somebody go check that out, because that's dangerous, because it's a 10-foot drop.
Thanks for the comment. We'll definitely pass that along.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners, members of the Board. Jessica Corus here on behalf of the applicant. We were in attendance at yesterday's review session and heard some comments that we appreciate your review, careful review of our application. The first comment I heard was in regard to the tenant fit out, that it's higher in the as-of-right than the proposed. They're both calculating at $70 per square foot, which is real typical for an office fit out. The difference is 198 square feet. The as-of-right is 198 square feet larger than the proposed, and this is a calculation of the gross square footage from the second floor to the top floor of each building, plus the lobby. So it's just a very small 198 times 70 square feet. That's the difference you're seeing. The second comment we heard was the, we reviewed the soft costs, and you noted that they were lower in the as-of-right. And we went back and took a look and compared the two columns in Schedule B side by side, and there were a couple things that popped out to us that I think we can explain. The first being the legal fees in the as-of-right being lower by about $55,000. In theory, there's no BSA work and no Greenberg Trarig for the legal fees in the as-of-right.
Should lower your prices.
Right. You'd pay different rental commissions in the as-of-right. And the third thing that we noted that set up a, we noticed was the rent-up loan interest. That's in the last section, about three-quarters of the way down. There's a big difference between that, and that's because we assumed a shorter rent-up period for the as-of-right, even though it is a encumbered in terms of its floor plate. And we noted that if you do use the same rent-up period as the proposed, which was about half a year, there would be an increase to the loss in the as-of-right. So the, they would be more on par with one another. So the last thing we wanted to ask- the last thing we wanted to ask, it seems that the question about the site value and other things from the previous analysis are now off the table, and since our understanding is we're not looking back, we wanted to make sure we were, no further details were needed.
Exactly.
Okay.
This is not going to be a look back, so I just wanted to see the cap rate range, to see that if there were any corrections to any of your assumptions, how much it would move that return, the estimated return.
Yes.
And to see if it was still within the range.
Yes.
So you're saying you're at the low end.
Yes.
If you could just give us the realty rate sheet, then-
Absolutely, and we regret the oversight in not providing it as an exhibit. And I do have it here today, and I can read into the record the third quarter of 2019 rates, if you're interested, and then submit it separately.
Sure.
The surveyed rates for office in the central business district in the third quarter of 2019, the minimum was 5.67%. The maximum surveyed rate was 12.81%, and the average surveyed rate was 9.52%. And we will provide that as a submission through your official channels. Thank you so much. Was there any other questions?
Not for me.
Oh, I hope to see you all again soon.
It's probably will.
Just, just very quickly, you mentioned that you're digging down to the foundation of the adjacent building. I want to make sure that, I want to hear it from your construction cost estimator, that he still needs the same cost items that were included in the previous cost estimate.
No, no, so we're not looking back, and we're not even taking into account the additional work, which may be much more costly, because then we're unpacking the whole thing.
I'm not talking about additional work. I'm not talking about additional work. I'm talking about work that I need a confirmation that's not going to be eliminated impacting the financials.
What's not going to be eliminated?
Like the underpinning. I, I want to hear it from the construction cost estimator that they still need the same scope that was considered previously. That's it. Nothing, nothing in detail. Just a general statement like that.
Okay. I'm concerned about an unpacking. This is an amendment of an exist, already approved application, and I don't want to, you know, start looking, that's one reason we're not looking at site values today, et cetera, et cetera, because once you look at one thing today, now you have to look at everything today.
I understood, but when I look at the previous submission, and I see that there is a cost item that's previously included, and today there is a statement that's made on the record, that says we're digging down to this elevation, I want to hear it from the construction cost estimator, that the previous scope is not impacted. There is no change to the foundation scope that's considered before. Just to avoid being missing something from my side.
Missing something like what?
So, am I, I'm just trying to understand. You're saying that if, let's say, the underpinning of the proposed building, as indicated now, changes during construction, it would improve the return than indicated now? That's what you said?
No. I, I don't, I don't know. So are you saying-
That's possible, but I, I didn't ask for whether the underpinning is, is needed or not. I just want to make sure that whatever they, they put in their construction cost estimate is not changing. Previously, let's say they consider, we want to build foundation, we want to build this, we want to build this. I want to make sure, because of the statement-
I just want to, I know that in the previous application, there were, there was a cellar and subcellar, so there was some, some differences, and now there's only a cellar, so our, our foundation costs have actually, our excavation and foundation costs have gone down from what was shown in the previous. It is reflecting excavation from grade to 12 feet.
So, so the reason I'm concerned about what you're saying is they explained that they encountered in the course of demolition, some very, very costly events.
Yes.
Right? Which are not being factored into our analysis. So by checking one thing, then I would have to say, well, now you have to factor in extraordinary expenses that they are now trying to compensate for by arguably just to throw out something, not having a subcellar. Now what we're doing is unpacking the entire variance, and I don't want to do that.
I didn't, I didn't ask for unpacking.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, is they're not bringing into the cost analysis the extraordinary costs that they learned about as they were doing the demolition work, which they, during the course of the application way back then, they might have brought in, had demolition been going on, and they discovered it, they might have said, whoa, we found something really terrible, our numbers are all off, we didn't realize that, and it's even worse than we thought, right? But they didn't discover it until after the application was approved, right? And the, once the application was approved, and they make this very clear in their papers, they realized that the project was so costly, they couldn't proceed. So, and they had to figure out what to do, and by the time they figured it out, you couldn't build a hotel anymore, anyway, right? So what I'm trying to say is, if you ask for confirmation that such-and-such-a-thing is still the case, and if it turns out not to be the case, and it turns out to be much less money for argument's sake, right, then the only way that it would be fair to be looking at this all over again is to say, okay, now let's talk about the other expenses that caused you to change your approach to make, to balance out the costs, right? So I would ask that we not ask for that information, so that we can move on and not have to ask for all the extraordinary costs that they've encountered, that they don't give us. They're not offering to us, and we haven't asked for, because we're not unpacking the application from scratch.
Understood, and-
Okay, let's just keep it at that, okay? Thank you, okay.
Are there any further comments or questions?
We need LPC CVA.
Yes.
No, they don't have it yet. They're going to give it to us. We have, we don't have that yet. That's the problem, is LPC. When is your hearing?
So we're targeting April 21st for the LPC hearing. We do have to go to the Community Board, so that's kind of-
All right.
-the next hearing that would work out after the full Community Board.
Okay. But April 21st for LPC hearing?
For LPC.
So you'll already have been at the Community Board?
Correct.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I don't think there was anything else, right? Okay. Are there any speakers on this application? All right.
So we would seek to close the hearing and leave the record open for our submissions.
Can't while we're waiting for LPC.
Okay.
Is this enough time for LPC?
LPC for 21. Yeah, but that doesn't matter. LPC can submit. That's enough. Yeah, yeah. That's enough, I think.
Submission April 29th for a continued hearing May 19.
Would it not be possible to schedule for the first hearing after the LPC hearing? Because we could definitely submit earlier than April 29th.
No, no, because LPC needs to be able to turn around a CVA, so you have to give them a minute, right? So if they're hearing it on the 21st, you're not giving them a lot of time to respond. Right?
Can you tell me the hearing date again?
Yes, May 19.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appeals, calendar, item number 10, 2019, 19A, 107th Avenue, Staten Island. There is a request for an emergency project.
Elise Foladere for the applicant. They asked around six weeks, so like in late April, May, kind of.
Okay. Is there a submission?
What?
Is there a submission?
Yes.
Okay. Submission April 22nd for a continued hearing May 12th.
Thank you.
Item number 11, 2019, 82A, DVC's 430 St. Marx Place, Staten Island. See all three calls.
Elise Foladere from Eric Palanik, PCAT. Do you want me to sign in right now?
No, okay.
Okay. So we understand that FDNY still needs to comment, and DOT still needs to comment. I wrote the architect about getting confirmation about the 7202G waivers, to make sure that we don't need to come back and forth to your board. And then your last comment was about the builder's pavement plan. I do have with me a draft builder's pavement plan, but it, I provided you with the objections and the notice of comments to show that the examiner will not approve the BPP plan until the BSA issues an approval. So I can submit.
It's funny, because sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. No rules, right?
Yeah. So unless someone from your end reaches out, I don't see how they're going to let us move forward with the BPP.
But the, the pavement plan has to be responsive to DOB's objections, right?
Yeah, and they, you can see the comments as, okay, okay, okay. They actually were good with all the objections, except for the BSA approval cloud for the bed of a map street, and then they wrote-
Okay.
-we're not moving forward with this.
Okay. So what I, in terms of the 7201G thing-
Yeah.
-the best is for the architect to sit down with someone at DOB and say, we don't know what we need to have waived, because there we are, right in the middle of the street.
It's literally 100% of the building would be in the street.
Yes, though it's waiving heightened setback, right?
Yeah.
I guess. Yards, I guess. I mean-
Yeah.
I don't know. It's so hard to, like, get your head around this one.
It's kind of funny, too, because St. Marx is totally built. I mean, not St. Marx, the street in front of it.
Right.
Like, the-
Victory Boulevard.
Victory Boulevard, sorry, yeah.
Yeah. No, it's a, it's, right.
Yeah.
So, but that's the thing. And we've had conversations with DOB saying, we don't understand why you need this waiver. We're allowing it to be in the bed.
Yeah.
It's in the bed.
Yeah. And what's funny, actually, is at my Community Board hearing for this case, City Planning was presenting another case, and they asked City Planning, why do you, like, are you going to demap the street, what's happening? And they're like, no, but we're clearly never going to build this street.
Yes, right. Okay.
It's not even on the zoning map.
Yeah.
Right. Strange. Okay.
Okay, so I will tell the architect that and give him the video, so he knows to pursue that at DOB. And I guess the timeline is on DOT and Fire Department.
Fire Department needs 30 days.
Say, what'd you say?
Sorry, Fire Department needs 30 days.
Yeah, they answered the question.
Right, okay. All right, so April 22nd, 30 days of, that's her submission.
Yeah, that's fine.
Submission April 22nd for a continued hearing May 12th.
Thank you.
Is that enough time, Fire Department? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully DOT.
Decision items, item number 12, 2018, 171BZ, 1 East 70th Street, Manhattan.
Good afternoon, Jeff Mulligan for Collection.
So we're going to defer this decision, because we are still finishing up environmental review. We can try to put it on for the next year, see how we do.
So, March 17.
Thank you.
Item number 13, 2018, 172BZ, 4609 and 4619, 31st Avenue, Queens.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Everybody till it clears.
Sorry, just, just a second. Let's clear the room here. Clear the room. Where's my form for this guy? Okay, here we go. Please, we're trying to move, continue here. Please move outside.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We're here before you, primarily to discuss the revised operations plan.
No, you're not going to discuss it.
No.
We've received it.
Thank you.
It's a closed hearing.
Thank you.
I appreciate your revisions on the operations plan. Did everyone have a chance to look at it? I think it's pretty specific. And I do have to say that I really appreciate the neighbor outreach section, with the understanding that you're anticipating that the neighbors are, behave in a way that's respectful of the operation of the organization, and, and in return, you'll do the same for the neighbors, or the other way around, right?
That is our commitment.
Vice versa. Okay. So I, I think, you know, you can't predict everything. The goal is to keep the garbage ordered, and to the extent that, what I would like to add is, in terms of condition, that the operational plan be a condition, so maybe with all of its detail, but I would like to add that in the event that pickups are not frequent enough, are determined to be not frequent enough, in other words, you have-
We can add-
-large piles of garbage that are still sitting there someplace, that you add additional pickup days. It seems like there's only one day where there's no pickup, but maybe that's the critical missing day, or something, right?
Absolutely.
So that would be sort of the addition to that operational plan. Any other comments on the board side on this? Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to grant on that extremely wrong condition.
Chair, promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shibeta?
Aye.
Application's been granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 14, continued hearings, 2016, 1215BZ, 142 Westonup 29th Street.
Why is that not continuing those are decisions? Oh, maybe I may have missed that.
Your team, Mr. Apalatnik?
Yeah.
Raise your right hands. Raise your right hand, get your sworn in, you can sign in later. Raise your right hand. Do affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, to respond honestly to the formal questions.
I do.
Son, go.
Hello, good afternoon. Thank you very much for spending the time reviewing this application. I have a bit of a hoarse voice, so if Odor asks me, I apologize. I know I'm coming into today not with too many supporters of my application on my side. I watched the review session yesterday, and it took all of 10 minutes, and there were a lot of comments. But I'd, I'd ask if you can indulge me, because I did spend a lot of time since your review session before, and we all spent a lot of time trying to set it up, and I think we've kind of been a little mixed up in some of the circumstances going on. The first thing is, just where we left it last time, so you know why we did the report, the engineering report, the way we did it. Our last hearing was in June. It was, it was set by more than one commissioner, that one of the, the first issues you wanted to see was that we couldn't add on to the existing building. It was, you made it very clear to us that we don't have a variance at all. Forget about uniqueness, forget about hardship. If we could build on this existing building, and we can make some use of the building. It was told us that we don't have a case at all. And it said to us in no uncertain terms, you go find out and make sure that you can add on to this building for-
So if you can, I'm sorry to interrupt you. If you can, I want to make this very short. If you can add to this building, the case is done.
Right, that was what was said to us last time. That was the way we were, exactly what was said to us. And we went out, and Jay is here, he's the engineer, and he's going to testify, and I was with him, and we were all with him, and he came back again a lot of times, and he submitted his report. He came to the conclusion, which we'll get into the substance in a second, but just to make my presentation, he came to the conclusion that the building cannot be added on to. And whether or not you disagree with him in your engineering skills, I'll let the two of you have that discussion. I'll take him at face value that his report says he couldn't add on to it. I thought that's what the board, we thought that's what the board wanted to see, as the first step. And then from there, to go on to, it wasn't talked that much about the uniqueness study at the last hearing, other than to embellish it, but there to embellish upon the uniqueness study and to demonstrate-
Did you see that in your notes?
How now that we're left with a blank slate, as the chair said, first you have to get yourself to a blank slate. Now you're on a blank slate, which is where we, I thought we'd proven. Then we were going to show to you how that prevents us from developing an office building and earning a reasonable return. In the interim, Jay Siegel had an application, and you just heard it, at 1162 Broadway.
Mm-hmm.
And, and it was an application eerily similar to this.
Not at all. I'm going to interrupt you right there.
Similar, yes, go on.
24-foot width versus yours. That's major.
I'm not even getting to the width part yet, but I'm going to get to the width part in a second. We'll come to that. Just taking on our argument, because when we spoke last time, we were all talking about 35 feet. It wasn't so, 32 feet, it wasn't such a visceral reaction you just had, that it was not narrow enough. And 32 feet is not a very wide lot. It's not as narrow as 25, but it's not, admittedly, I see you're very strong about the opinion of the 32 versus 25, but it's still 32, it's still not a very wide lot, we can all agree. And Jay's came, application came in on Broadway. That cast today, I saw that. I saw what you said yesterday in the review session.
No, 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 let me, let me clarify. It didn't cast today, it proved today.
It proved today, from the, to the back. It proved from your perspective, I saw the board took the position, that the 30, if Jay can build an office on a 25-foot wide lot, that proves that why we should be able to build it here. We're here with- We're here with Barbara and with our experts to tell you that's not the case. And if, we, we'd like the chance to play it out a little bit more, but the overall overarching concept of why that case needs to be studied, and you should give us some time to, to show you, is they got stuck. They got stuck in a bad position. And you even just, Commissioner Ashetta even just tipped on it in the last conversation, how stuck they got in the financials. They got, they worked themselves into a position, if you look at it backwards, from the real world business perspective. They had an approval for a hotel. They were making a deal to have a hotel come in. Their deal fell apart for whatever reason with their hotels. The hotel business did not drop dramatically in New York City. Their deal fell apart. So then they were left with nothing except for a variance for an as-of-right hotel. That's what they,
I, I need to interrupt you.
Yes.
They applied for teeny-weeny bulk waivers for a hotel which was an as-of-right use. They could have come initially for a, for an office building and the teeny-weeny bulk waivers. But they opted for a hotel because at the time they thought that was a good idea. Things happen, then the zoning doesn't let them anymore, right? Your client comes here, in addition to not teeny-weeny bulk waivers, it comes for a use waiver. That's an extremely huge ask, and the use is a particularly huge ask because the difference in income between residential co-ops and all that stuff is enormous as compared to an office, right?
Yes.
And so, so that's the thing. And if, and what's proven in the prior cases, if you can make a hotel or an office work on a 25-foot wide lot in an M, in a, in a 10 FAR zone, because it's different than the applications we see where you only get one FAR, right? The 10 FAR zone, that's amazing, right? If you can do that on a 25, 26-foot wide lot, you can certainly do it on a 32-foot wide lot.
And we might be able to, and, and, and the waivers for the office building, if we end up in that direction, we probably wouldn't need them, just like they would, just like you just said. But where I'm going to is they got stuck. They got into a position where they had a hole in the ground, they had damage to adjoining buildings, they had obligations to lenders, they had no as-of-right alternative except for an office building. And that's all they could do. They have to move right now. That's why they're not changing the financials now. That's why nothing's changing. They gotta get out. They're stuck, they're in a bad position. They eight years into a deal with a hole in the ground in the middle of Midtown Manhattan, with damage to the buildings on either side, with steel rods through them.
Don't talk anymore about their application.
So our application, where we're, I'm simply just trying to say that the office is not as easy as that application would make it look. There's a, there's a reason why they're,
No, okay, let's just,
But this one.
Straight chase.
This one.
I'm looking at your lesser variance option, which isn't really a lesser variance, it's because it's just an office, right? The office floors are great. They look like your standard office floors that you see in the neighborhood. Architects, graphic designers, all of that crowd, rent offices that look exactly like this, where it's one big space, and you've got windows in the front and windows in the back. Yay, you get off the floor, it has the name of your office right there at the reception desk, and have a nice day.
It lays out, it does. We're not, the lesser variance quote-unquote does lay out. The problem we've, that we're arguing to you, and if we can't convince you, we can't convince you, here's the problem. It's a speculative development on a boutique office building on a block that's kind of an off, not necessarily the hub. Jay's property, that Broadway, the middle of Broadway, office buildings all around, a Broadway dress. This, it's a speculative development.
All developments are speculative, excuse me, unless they're purpose-built from the owner's argument.
Right, but some office buildings, you know as well as I do, that before an office building goes up, they get a, they get one tenant or two tenants that are anchor tenants, that kind of make the financing go.
No, no, no.
But I'm,
That's a Conde Nast building. That's not one of these little guys.
Well, that's, that's the problem, but that's the problem we're arguing. We're not arguing, you're 100% right, the floor is laid out, it would be a great office for me. I would love to have an office in this building.
We're done.
I would love to. Can we finance it and build it? That's the problem, not can I rent it?
But your issue is an issue that would be encountered with every single smaller office building. That, that's, you know, you have the cream of the crop office buildings where everybody wants to get in there before it's even built, and you have the large majority of other office buildings. That's why you have different office classes.
Right, yes, but we're,
And, and there's markets for each one of them, but those are speculative. Because they're just not fancy offices. That's the economics of smaller office buildings.
And you're right. Well, if, but we're saying it's we're in that, that funky area. If it was, if it was a bigger floor plate, yes, that would work. At the, at the level we're at, we're more akin to the smaller floor plates where it's much riskier. The moves that they're making on the Broadway site is a very risky maneuver.
You haven't looked for an office recently, have you?
I have. I have, and they're very expensive.
Yes, they're very expensive. That's a point.
But they're a building that's fully leased up already. This is a ground-up lease-up. That's what I'm trying to,
Can we save some time and just listen fairness to why the building couldn't be enlarged, like in, in two minutes?
Jay, why don't you come up for a second? Because I'm not an engineer. She wants to know why we can't add on to the building.
No, 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 I don't want to know that.
He mentioned that probably we're gonna be done in a minute. Trust me.
No. I don't, no, 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 wait, 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 wait. No, but he, no, he said it, we didn't say it. We said, "Now you're looking at it as a tear-down." So even if it could be enlarged as-of-right, you can't put 10 FAR in, on top, right? So just for argument's sake, not everybody is going to add seven stories to this building. That's probably more than even a really strong building is ready to take. So if we just looked at it as a vacant lot, which is what they want to do, they want to do a vacant lot.
Yes.
So we look at it as a vacant lot, and we look at it as a 32-foot wide vacant lot of a normal depth, and we say, "What's wrong with this picture?" And we say, "There was nothing wrong with the picture on Broadway in the 20s, right? To build an office or a hotel as-of-right." Same diff here. We don't need to look at whether or not the building could support additional floors because that's not what they want to build. They want to tear it down. They're entitled to tear it down and then make the argument that the vacant lot is unique. They haven't made that argument and won't be able to, because as we said yesterday, you can't just look at the few sites that have two-story buildings. You have to look at buildings considered soft sites, which normally, for instance, city planning, what do they do? They look at if it's 50% less than the maximum FAR, it becomes a, a soft site. So you have, I don't remember which number, 35 buildings or something like that that are soft sites, and so then you're competing against all of those soft sites who are worse off than you are. I think that's the end of the A.
Yes.
So I'm not sure. So I would suggest that rather than talking about Bs and whether you can finance it and all that stuff, you stick with the A and prove to us somehow, which I can't figure out. Very quickly, you have five minutes to do this, because we need to move on.
It's already been done for me, so. On the case we were just discussing.
On a 25-foot wide lot.
Yeah.
But the arguments were the same.
It doesn't make a difference. The arguments are not the same if you can't claim the same constricted floor plate. And you cannot, because you have 32 feet 6 inches, and they had 25 feet width. Narrow width less than 25 feet. And a small size, less than 2,500 square feet of lot area. You have neither of those, so you cannot claim the same argument. And not only that, if you do look at your uniqueness finding, there are slews of lots that are developed up to 5.0 FAR that are 25 feet. Your own uniqueness study has that, and I didn't even pick up on all of them. I just took the FAR up to 3.0.
Right, because we're not,
And got a bunch more.
Because we're not, we're not arguing, we're arguing that the existing buildings that are of substantial size should not be included within the amount.
3.0 FAR in a 10,
With a, with a higher FAR.
3.0 FAR in a 10 FAR zone is significantly underbuilt, and I would say almost as significantly underbuilt as yours. However, more constricted because they're on 25-foot lots. Even if we looked at everything that was developed to a 2-point FAR that you claimed were the only truly comparable things, all of the ones that you mentioned are on lots that are 25 feet wide or less, which makes any owner willing to trade up to yours in a heartbeat, because you have a greater advantage, because you have more width.
We do, we do have more width, but it doesn't mean that it's fantastically usable width. It's a range of 50 feet.
Sure, it's not, but you've got a lot more width to play with. And if, instead of giving us an as-of-right office plan that you're trying so hard to show is not gonna work.
No, we didn't, that was, that was not done like that, by the way. He was trying, it was a mistake. We weren't trying to misrepresent and show you the two different scenarios that we spoke about yesterday.
Okay, well, if you were to look at it as it should be, which is at the lower,
Two, two, two both of them.
Of the lesser, um, lesser variance office building, you've got 22 feet 2 inches of width across your narrowest part.
Listen, I'm understand, I'm, we're all hearing you, what you're all saying to us, and you, we understand you're not, we get you're not buying.
Right, somebody with a 25-foot wide lot is going to have 18 feet across, maximum. You have 22 feet. There's a big difference there. And it's an open floor plan, so that's why you could give us this resolution and we could look at it. But just because it's similar facts, doesn't mean it's the same facts.
Yeah, I was, I was using the resolution for, at the top of the second page and the bottom of the first one. The whereas, it goes into this whole discussion of the two, three-story buildings, and it calls out ones that are four stories, it's not being analogous, and it goes to what we're talking about right now. And it validates the methodology that Ian and I used. But if I'm hearing you, I think you're telling me that's irrelevant. That in your mind, you've drawn the line at the 25 versus the 32.
It's not a trivial difference. It's not triv, the, the difference in size is not trivial. The 25 feet and 30 feet is substantial, so it,
If that's how you feel, I'm not gonna be able to change. That's a matter of opinion, and you're entitled to your opinion, and you're the voting one, so.
It's also supported by the previous decisions of BSA.
No, there have been other ones that got me the other way. But I'm, I'm not gonna sit here and get into it with you, because I, I see where you're coming from.
It's also supported by your own uniqueness study that shows that there are many 25 by 100-foot lots there.
So for the sake of my client who's here today listening to everything and is aware, we don't want to waste your time.
Okay.
If we went to an alternative scenario, the lesser scenario.
You still need an A. You still have an A. You have to have.
Yes, well, we, I think we have a better A with that, with the combination of the length and width of the property, of the floor plate.
I, I don't understand. You still have an A.
Right, well, we,
What's your A? How is it?
The Ases were much more encumbered at the other upper floors by the time we're done with the staircases.
More encumbered than the people who have a 25-foot wide lot who also have 10 FAR and also have setback?
Yeah, but nobody's building, on this discussion, nobody is building a brand-new ground-up 25-foot wide office building in New York City.
What do you mean? They, they are so,
The one you just saw has a setback, has a setback waiver for the front.
Because they proved that they're A-finding. They proved they were uniquely encumbered by the narrow width of their lot by simply showing us that the core takes up most of the site, right? And that without that, and that by the time you get to the setback floor, you have, you can't do anything at the end.
We have one elevator, and we have one stair right now, which is a scissors stair, which is incorrect. It shouldn't be a scissors stair. The Arctic may have, I think it should be doors.
So your submission and telling us your story incorrectly is,
Well, no, because we were trying,
So I would really recommend this because the record is showing a representation on what an as-of-right building looks like.
And that is, yes, come on.
Let me finish my sentence. The record is showing what an as-of-right building looks like, and we rely on that, right? And we're relying on that you would build a building with one elevator and a scissors stair, and we're not your code experts. And the idea that now you retract from that, I think, is extremely poor in the record. I would recommend that you just withdraw the application. And if you want to come back for a little bulk waiver and make a new argument about, which has to be a whole new argument, about why somehow or other you're uniquely encumbered by a 32-foot wide lot in the face of four blocks away a 26-foot lot, that's your prerogative. But I think the record is now tainted by your representation that, or your architect's representation, that an as-of-right building has a scissors stair with one elevator.
Well, no, the,
Because it sounds like that's what you would build if you had to under an as-of-right situation.
If, I can just explain. The scenario we presented showed a more favorable return on the as-of-right scenario with one elevator. We were trying to include as much floor area as we could in the presentation to you to show you the best possible return on the as-of-right. So the elevator was a choice to have one or two. But if you were really gonna build the building, and we wanted the BSA, of course, the building would have two elevators, because who's gonna wait to go upstairs on a 14-story building?
Well, lots of people, because lots of, lots of buildings have one elevator.
Yeah, but it's not really ideal.
So.
So there was no intent. We weren't, we were trying to actually do it the other way. We weren't trying to, to present to you a plan that was showing you something.
But I, I just reiterate, you've tainted your record because you're representing that that's a building that you would build if you had, I'm not even sure what, because it's not really represented as a lesser variance, because that's shown as an office, and you didn't actually apply for an office. So I don't even really understand the appellation of lesser variance. It's more like an alternative as-of-right, because your, your application is for residential use, not for offices. So I, I don't actually understand that lesser variance appellation, right? So, but because you've shown an as-of-right building with one elevator, with a scissors stair, that's what we're relying on for the usable space in an as-of-right condition. And then we're saying, "Wonderful. You've proven that you can do it. Have a nice time, build your building." So I would recommend that you withdraw this variance, or we, we close it and, and we vote on it.
Well, we'd like some time, if we could have some time to think about things.
No, 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 we close this, and then we put it on for decision, and if you choose to withdraw in the meantime, that's your business.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, are there any speakers, though, on this? Okay, motion to close?
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shibeta?
Okay. On forward decisions, next week, next time? Decision, March 17th. Thank you.
Item number 15, 2018-109BZ, 9-0344th Road, Queens. There is a request to withdraw this application.
I'm sorry, let me restate it. Item number 15, thank you, 2018-109BZ, 9-0344th Road, Queens. There is a request to withdraw this application.
Okay, so a motion to withdraw.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shibeta?
Aye.
Keep going? Yeah, everybody all right? Item number 16, 2018-192BZ, 229 Lennox Avenue, Manhattan. Raise your right hands. I raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to the formal questions?
Okay, sign.
Good afternoon, my name is Frank Noriega. I'm here from Sheldon Bell on behalf of the applicant. I'm joined today by not one, but two architects, Peter Shinoda and Mark Kaplan, who are both very familiar with this application. We listened to the comments from yesterday's review session, and it sounds like there's a little bit of confusion that I believe, some of this was covered in the last hearing, but I just want to make sure everybody is on the same page. There were a lot of comments yesterday about rear yards and power building in the rear yard. And my understanding, I thought we hit this over the head, that this site, as well as any of the other lots that face on Lennox, because of the proximity to the corner, do not have rear yard requirements.
No, 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 we're not talking about the rear yard. We're talking about your distance that you're required to have. And it's like, let's say abbreviated by calling it a yard, right?
All right, so colloquially, we can call it a yard, but I just want to make sure that it's clear that there are no yard requirements, and we can have 100% lot coverage on this site.
We understand that, but you're saying that you don't have a compliant building because you don't have 30 feet from your windows. And when Commissioner Shanda was summarizing, she said it was built with a 20-foot rear yard, for lack of another way of describing that open space that's in the back, right? Okay.
I just want to make sure it was a colloquial thing, that there is no rear yard per zone.
Right, okay.
Now, on that, so yes, we are requesting a waiver to 23861, which has to do with legally required windows. So just as a side, we can have windows there as-of-right. We can pop windows in so long as it conforms with building code, but the moment that we introduce some sort of habitable space or living room behind that window that needs the natural light and air, that is what triggers that requirement. And it has to be 30 feet from the rear lot line. And what's key is, the section is, it's in what we've confirmed with DOB, is it's measured perpendicularly to the window. And that's, that's important also for the as-of-right. I'll get to that in a second. So when we look at the as-of-right building, we have actually enlarged the building, and it actually builds further. Because we don't have a rear yard requirement, we can build further out. We do have glazing that does face the rear lot line, but none of those windows are actually legally required windows. They're legally required. The legally required windows are being incorporated in the form of skylights. So they're not facing the rear lot line anymore. And DOB has approved this.
So then I, I'm totally confused. So it says in the zoning resolution, you need 30 feet from your legally required window to your lot line. A skylight faces up.
Right. Measured perpendicularly from the window.
But that's up to this, to the lot line that's up?
So it doesn't face the lot line anymore. That's, the as-of-right drawings doesn't even trigger the 23861.
So then why don't you just do that?
Because as presented, it is a, it's a hard, practical difficulty in this case to build this much larger space. It's undesirable to the client and it's going to cost us approximately half a million dollars.
No, no, no. You have this as-of, you have a, you have a, on the third floor, there's a deck.
Correct.
The floor below seems like it needs, the floor below is the one that's the open kitchen thing, right?
On the third floor is the kitchen. Third floor is the kitchen, first floor is a living room.
Okay, so all right, so the first floor has the double-height living room.
Correct.
First, second floor, double-height living room.
Correct.
So you pop a skylight into the open deck, you've already got, that's not $500,000. Or if it is, go find a new contractor.
And I would agree with that, but that doesn't solve the issue for the third floor, which also has the same problem. We have to build out to accommodate the third floor as well, because we're asking for a waiver at that level as well.
So that's a different question. Your third floor is part of your original residential building, because that's where that lot line, that wall is, right? The building was built in the 18-whatevers, pulled back 20 feet from the lot line. That's a different question.
So on that, because I think we have some potential remedies to that. If the board is willing to accept that, in 19, 1899, when this was built as a residential building, that rear wall was roughly, for the third and fourth floor, roughly in the same position. It was enlarged towards the side lot line, but as far as distance to the rear lot line, it is where it was built when it was a residence in 1899, in that condition. If the board is willing to accept that we are grandfathered in as a existing non-compliant window, and we can allow for that distance at the third floor, we can look at alternatives to providing light and air for the first floor in the form of, for example, a skylight at that terrace level. But our understanding is that DOB will not, has not accepted that, and we needed a waiver for 23861 for the third floor as well.
DOB hasn't accepted what? The grandfather in the kitchen level?
Correct, because the only legally existing residential building post-1961 is the fourth floor, not the third floor, even though that wall, that distance, the wall has been in existence roughly since 1899.
Since the building was built?
Correct.
Right, okay. So this is different than what you were saying before, which is what was so confusing in your papers. They're like all over the place, very hard to understand.
So we're trying to address both issues with one, one method of solving, which is this greenhouse enclosed area with skylights. But if we can bifurcate them into two different issues, yes, if we're willing to look at just the third floor as one way of complying, we can maintain that 20-some-odd-foot distance and have that approved separately, we would definitely be willing to explore other options for the first, second floor space.
Okay, so what you're saying is, your as-of-right for the kitchen floor was to add a little greenhousy thing?
It actually allowed for both. If you look at a.
No, just answer the question.
It, it.
That's part of our problem. You always try to answer everything altogether. You have to answer one thing at a time, okay?
So it not only solves the kitchen of the third floor?
Just answer my question about the kitchen.
Yes.
The kitchen, the way to, can we speak to the architect instead of you speaking for the architect? Let's hear from the architect. Okay. Hi, state your name, please.
Peter Shinoda.
Hi. So the way to solve the kitchen issue that DOB would have accepted is to build a little greenhousy thing on the kitchen floor?
Yes.
And you're saying to do that would cost $500,000?
Including.
No, just that?
Oh, no.
What we said.
So if you're going to speak, you have to come up.
My name is Mark Kaplan.
And you need to stand right in front of the mic, because I've been listening to hearings with two people. I can't hear either of them, so.
My name is Mark Kaplan. And no, what we, our as-of-right proposal had a greenhouse construction for both the third floor and the first floor.
So you're doing this combined greenhousy thing?
Because, since we had to come to the, to the BSA, or we chose to come to the BSA to ask for this waiver of the distance requirement from legally required windows to the lot line, and we had to ask for that waiver on the third floor level, we said, okay, well, let's consider it for the first floor level as well.
Okay, so if you were to break it down into two parts, and you were just trying to make the kitchen level compliant, if you just added a little greenhousy thing at the kitchen level, it would make the kitchen compliant. Is that correct?
If we've added opable skylights, which could be in form of greenhouse, yes.
Right, okay.
To that level, that would, that would.
And then, so since you've.
Compliance.
Since you've already got a pretty, what is it, an 11-foot-deep balcony? Is that what it is? Terrace?
Terrace.
You've already got this 11-foot-deep terrace. So, and then if you just, instead of rebuilding the entire rear, see, that's where the $500,000 is coming in, instead of rebuilding that entire rear, you just pop skylights in the, in the roof or of the extension, that's not $500,000?
Um, no, and just to correct, there were several estimates submitted. The estimate for the greenhouse work was about $270,000, if I remember right, and that would have been for both levels. So I would have to, I'm not the contractor who estimated it, so but yes, I guess you could assume that it'd be about half, I would think.
Half, in other words, $130,000?
Something like that, because we'd have to bring out the sprinklers to cover that area as well. We'd have to heat that area as well. We'd have to, because all that would be beyond the, the rear wall of the current space. Because currently, there's three sets of doors there.
Mm-hmm.
So this would be like a, a sunroom out beyond that area, but those doors are big enough and the code would allow the skylight in that extended part to qualify for light and air throughout the entire thing.
Okay, okay.
But that, as I said, has to be heated, electrified, sprinkler, et cetera.
Got it, okay. I think that the, that just putting skylights into the deck as a solution so that, for the floor below, solves that, and then you get the, then you do, and then you, because that's the original line of the building that was built as a residence, that waiver makes sense, because that's what was built in a residence. You didn't understand that? Okay, so if we look at, sorry, I have a little Google. The rear of the building at the third and fourth floors are the original residential floors. So that's where the residential building was built, too. This is the, for me, this is the weird affectation of DOB, where they say, even though it was built as a residential building and converted to a community facility, when you convert it back to being exactly the same wall to be residential, you have to come to the BSA for a variance. I find that quite strange. So I don't have a problem with legalizing that, because you haven't changed that wall. But this other extension, which could be cured easily by popping some skylights in, which apparently DOB is allowing, I think they should just pop the skylights in, so that we're not looking at, you know, whether that addition was legal addition and all that. Well, you don't have to talk about that, or anything about that addition.
May I ask clarification?
Yeah.
So you're saying that if we were to leave the third floor as-is, and you would grant a waiver that the existing windows in that wall could be utilized for light and ventilation as legally required windows, even though they're only 20 feet?
20 feet back, yes.
From the, from the rear lot line. So no work would be necessary at that third floor level to achieve compliance?
Right, right.
Okay.
And then you just go back, go to DOB and you show skylights, that's what you're telling us, that DOB would accept skylights. You just drop some skylights in your, your balcony thing, your terrace thing.
May I ask another question?
Yeah.
We had submitted you a drawing in this recent submission that had a minimally compliant physical work necessary to achieve code compliance on the rear facade?
But that's.
And what that said was that.
Building code.
By building code, yes.
Okay.
But by building code, if we added one fixed window and changed the doors to, to glass, that space would achieve light and ventilation compliance by code if we were to get the same variance at that level that you're, you're offering at the third floor.
No, 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 but see, it's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I, so what that, what that proposal would have meant?
That's not what they want to do.
That the rear yard would still then be existing 11-foot?
The.
As opposed to what you had submitted in the as-of-right, in the as-of-right, your, pardon my use of the rear word, rear yard, but it is just to keep it visually simple. So in the minimal one that you had provided, you would have still maintained that 11-foot depth in the back of the property?
Correct.
Right. What you had submitted in the as-of-right?
We didn't get an as-of-right.
There was, in the original submission.
November 28, 2018. Oh, where do you build this skylight?
It was built all the way to the lot line.
No, 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 they're just putting a skylight in it.
Exactly the same footprints.
You're still maintaining the 11-foot, you're still maintaining the 11-foot, but you're putting a.
Putting a chamfered top on that, that floor.
Right, yes.
And then going up in another chamfered.
But what that represents is much more construction work than what I'm talking about. I'm just saying, don't put the skylight thing, the little greenhousy thing on the third floor. Leave that wall alone, because that was the wall that was built originally with the building. And instead of chamfering all that, you can chamfer, that's your business. But to do, to do, the cheapest solution is, you've already got this depth of something like 11, 10 feet, something, in your, that balcony terrace, you, then you drop your skylights right into the terrace. So the way that I'm looking at it is, I don't care if you do this chamfered thing, if you want to do this chamfered thing. It's more that when you come to us and say it's going to cost $500,000 to make the change, and I look at it and I say, no, it's just dropping in a few skylights till you have the required amount of area according to what's required, right?
I understand. The, the issue with going to, to glass is, one, we have to now go back to landmarks and hopefully get them to accept it. But secondly, the cheapest solution is the minimal physical work of just adding that one window and changing out the doors.
No, but that's not what you're.
But requires the same waiver as the third floor.
No, sorry, sorry. Let's just go back again. You're not proposing actually to do this drawing. You're proposing to show, do what landmarks allowed, which was those enormous doors at the back. Your question is, that's why I find that submission about code work really not helpful, because your proposal isn't to comply with building code. Your proposal is to do these beautiful gigantic double doors in this double-height space, and to be able to use those doors to comply with your light and air requirements, which they don't, because the double doors are too close to the rear lot line. So this, let me just, so what I'm just saying is, go do your big double doors, which is what landmarks approved and what your client wants, because that's amazing, right? But solve your light and air problem by, from our perspective, and I don't care whether you chamfer it or you don't chamfer it, dropping skylights in the floor of the terrace. So from my perspective, that's not such a significant cost to the owner, especially given the scope of work here, that would throw it into the hardship range that needs a waiver. On the other hand, the existing wall that you're talking about, and pulling it forward and all this sort of stuff, or pulling it back and all that, that's significant and ridiculous, because it's the original wall of the house. And from landmarks' point of view, they wouldn't want you to move the original wall of the house. I happen to know that landmarks always wants you to keep the top two floors of the townhouse intact as part of the row, and so you're keeping the top two floors intact. So, so that, that's what I'm saying. So I would be okay with the waiver for the third floor and no waiver for the second floor, and you deal with that at DOB, provided they're willing to allow some sort of skylight solution. I don't care about the code issues, that's a DOB question.
Okay.
Okay, do you understand that this is, these are code drawings? We're not here for code.
No, I understand, no, no, I understand.
Yeah, okay.
So, I'll bring that back to the, to the owner. It sounds reasonable.
Okay, but you don't have a version of the draw, of the building like that already? No.
No.
Okay, so that's what we would need. You simply resubmit a drawing that shows a skylight popped into the floor. If you want to chamfer it, go, go ahead, but I think it ruins your facade, right?
I'm not sure landmarks would accept that.
Yeah, so I would say, landmarks just wants to see a parapet around the setback, right? And so underneath the parapet, you drop a skylight. They won't care about that. They can't see it, it's not visible from the street. That's a staff-level approval. Okay, if it even needs that. Okay. All right, so make that change real fast.
Okay.
Okay, are there any speakers on this?
How fast can we do that?
Wait a couple of weeks. This guy spoke to Kevin, just make sure he's, he's good with everything. All right, so it sounds like we will, we will definitely amend the drawings to consider that, but we need at least a couple of weeks to confirm with the, the owner as well as draw up the plans. So I don't know if, as far as submission day, that works out.
You just need a couple of weeks to submit, or you need more?
I think a couple of weeks would be fine. Give us a couple of days to get to the owner, let him think about it, get back to us, and then Peter can make the changes on the drawings. Okay.
Submission April 1st, or a continued hearing April 21st.
Okay.
Just quickly before we go, I know one of the issues that was brought up by the fire department with these large glass horses, they want it fully sprinkled.
Sorry, yeah.
I just, so if we're not asking for a variance, can we ignore?
You are asking for a variance.
Sorry, a variance at that level anymore?
Fire department, once you come here.
I just, I just want to make sure. So if that's the case, then we will.
This is where we work with fire department.
Hold on. So I just want to see if that was still on the table, and we will definitely still coordinating.
Yes, it's always on the table. Do you want to speak? I'm sorry, we didn't close, so you're still.
John Daly, Fire Department. The, the application is a little confusing, so.
I see.
So after they made their next submission due April 1st, I can, I'll review and I'll comment at, at that time.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I guess that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay. So, am I going to take a break now? It's 2:00. Yeah, so lunch break now, 2:30 back? Am I good? Okay. Okay, we're back on the record, ladies and gentlemen. Item number 17, zoning calendar, 2019-27bz, 4533 18th Avenue, Brooklyn. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond to the board member questions?
I do.
You sign, in?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is John Oberlin Jr. I'm associated with Client Sloc P L L C, and I'm here for the applicant congregation for Na'amanakam. I reviewed the executive session, the video on the executive session yesterday. Unfortunately, I'm not, was unable to produce the architect between the times I was able to review the video and today's hearing. For the, as a result, I can respond to a few of the comments, but not all of them. I would respectfully request postponement, if possible.
That'd be great, yeah. Why don't, why don't we do that? Why don't we adjourn it to give you a chance to respond properly? Because there's, as I think Commissioner Shabeta said yesterday, our comments are the same, plus what we had the last time. And really, your architect and a responsible party must be present, because otherwise you don't have the authority to answer on their behalf, right, especially on the owner's behalf. So the, and the other part of it is that the application materials really need to be properly done, and they're not. So this will give you a chance to get a copy of a good application that makes an argument for a variance under the. good application that makes an argument for a variance under the Cornell Doctrine with a programmatic needs analysis, because right now, you haven't made a case, even though it's a very simple site, right?
You have a sample case?
Okay.
Now, I'm glad you brought that, because if I, I've read, I reviewed the video, I think, three times last night, and just to make sure that I'm clear, the issue about the programmatic needs is, why does the congregation, given the number of members, need such a large building, is that correct?
Yeah, it's correct, but if you've never read an application, these are very, let's say, clearly structured applications, if you've never read a sample, good one, then you need to, because you wouldn't be asking the question you just asked if you had read a sample, good one, right? So, programmatic needs are what supports the argument for the, what's known as the minimum variance necessary. So, step one is, you're a house of worship, and therefore you have deference, you don't need to make a unique physical condition finding under the Cornell Doctrine, but you do need to make a minimum variance necessary finding, and if the congregation, for argument's sakes, was all, was only 20 people, they wouldn't need much of a space in order to do that, so no reason for all those waivers. So, you need to make an argument, and you must get a sample application, because I don't, this is the second hearing where I commented on the application being incorrectly prepared.
So, we have, I found a few-
Please speak into the mic.
I found a few samples, so I can share that.
Okay, good, so Jella can give you some samples of good applications, please use those as your model.
I certainly will, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Should I give you my business card, or my email, or?
I think you have been emailing me, I believe, Overland, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay, I think you have been emailing me.
Very well, thank you.
Okay, so we, so we'll just adjourn this, and, did you want?
No, no, no.
No, okay.
No, no, I was going to say, we had a couple that we, you know, wanted to mention to you that-
What did, I don't know what you said.
The samples that we wanted to mention to you, I figured we'd give them that.
All right, so we're just adjourned, okay, so we need to leave a little time, because this is a rebuilding of the application, because we're just not there, okay?
So, wait, yeah. Submission April 29th, or a continued hearing May 19th?
And I think the suggestion while that's going on, that some of the, while, while we're taking time to make sure the application's very complete, that there also an effort made to do the site investigation, make sure the building is safe and other things, because the safety and the security of the building is also important.
Yeah, yeah, right, so that was stated yesterday, with Fire Department, I think, was present yesterday, but again, and I know they went to inspect, and I don't think they got inside, not sure if they got inside, but the-
The Fire Department's going to speak, don't they?
Yeah, sorry?
The Fire Department-
Yeah, yeah, if you want to speak to it, otherwise, we really want an inspection by DOB, so I think Jella already and Ted were going to reach out to D P, DOB, to get an inspection on the safety of the existing structure-
Yes.
-for this particular use, right, because it was filed self-certified as a house, but it's actually illegally being used as a place of assembly, you know?
But because Fire Department, just a quick question, because Fire Department couldn't get access, is there maybe someone that they can go, or you don't rather they just show up?
I don't know if they got access, I'm not sure, did they, so if he wants-
I mean, is there a contact person, or you just want to, DOB send themselves or something?
John Daly, Fire Department, arrangements are being made with the Department of Buildings to do a joint inspection of the premises.
Okay, okay, great.
And if there's any, if there's any problem, we can designate a contact person, or I can be that contact person for the inspection, I'll be happy to do so.
All right, so, so you put that, you already gave him the schedule?
Yeah, submission date April 29th, hearing date 5/19, correct, Kurt?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Item number 18, 2019, 184BZ, 4520 83rd Street and 80-52 47th Avenue, Queens, raise your right hand, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, and to respond honestly to the board member questions?
Okey-dokey.
Well, I'm waiting for Seager on this, right? Yes. Now, just got the two letters.
Good afternoon, my name is Frank Noriega, from Shell Nobel, on behalf of the applicant. We're here basically today because we're, we're waiting on the, certain sign-offs from both the EP and DOT.
Right, so we sent your office comments from DOT?
Excuse me, can you repeat that?
We, we sent your office comments from DOT that we received today.
Correct, yeah, we received DOT, I believe, two different sets of comments from DOT today, and we're responding to DEP as well, but we need some time to-
Yeah, of course, we thought we would have it, but we need more time. Is your mic on? It's really hard to hear you when you speak.
It is, it's on.
Yeah, yeah, all right, well, don't look at me, it's hard to hear Jella.
Oh, I was, I was like looking at you in shock, because I know my mouth is big enough that you wouldn't be worried about my voice.
All on the record.
Okay, listen, I have no shame, that's correct.
Going forward as we speak.
Okay.
How long will we need for it?
Yes.
So, if, hi, my chairman, our environmental consultants are estimating that we're, they're expecting to hear back from DEP in about 45 days, and we're estimating that 21st hearing date would be appropriate, if that works for you?
The 21st of March?
Uh, April, excuse me, 21st of April.
Yeah, okay, that would be better.
Okay, April 21st.
For hearing?
Yeah.
For hearing, um, we can go submission-
I don't believe we're submitting anything.
The, the only reason there might be a, so you gave us the two alternatives of the street going one way versus the street going the other way, obviously reversed street route is preferred, because it allows the buses to be on the proper side of the street.
Correct, and my, my understanding is that we are working with DOT to get a post-approval commitment from DOT to reverse that traffic, and yes, we're working towards that.
Right, okay, so, so, but to clarify, that there is no need for a submission, because they submitted one of each, they submitted drawings that either show it as is, and they submitted drawings that show it with the reverse, so I don't know if there's any submission by the applicant.
There was a meeting with the community board transportation. Wasn't there a meeting last, uh, I have it in my note that after the February hearing, you were going to meet with the community board regarding the change in the traffic direction.
That I am unaware of, I will have to-
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, they did tell, your office did tell me that they-
Jella, please, you have to speak into the mic.
Your office said they approved it.
Perfect, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, the community board approved it?
Did they submit a letter?
Yeah.
Can we get a copy of?
I don't have a letter for it, I was told that they, it was approved, so I'll reach out to your office, try to get that.
Okay.
So, April 21st, no submission, correct?
April 21st, no submission, other than the environmental.
Perfect, thank you.
New cases, item number one, 2019, 28BZ, 485 Kings Highway, Brooklyn. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, and to respond honestly to the board member questions?
Frank Sejoc, Ackerman LLP, for the applicant. We attended yesterday's review session, and understand there were really no outstanding issues with respect to this application.
No, Kings Highway?
Kings Highway.
Zoning chart.
So, I resubmitted the zoning chart that was previously submitted with the initial application, and also resubmitted our, our posting, the public posting that was in the lobby. I'm not sure if you received them, we resubmitted that, those materials yesterday afternoon.
Hold on a second. My apologies, I was looking at the most recent submission.
That's fine.
And I did not see it in that, so.
Oh, you did.
Understood, I did.
You did, you did.
My apologies.
Okay, so, and we have Fire Department-
It went to Shaleen, I didn't, you didn't come to me.
Went to me, and I sent it to all of you, and it's in the-
Thank you, Shaleen, yeah.
So, I also understand there's a, a Fire Department letter indicating conditional approval, will note that there is a fire alarm installed and operational in the space, and, which would be-
No, it's not a conditional, it's a no, it's a letter of no objection.
But it indicates-
These premises have a fire suppression system that has been tested and witnessed to the Bureau of Fire Prevention Satisfaction, an application has been filed to provide a fire alarm system throughout the entire building, therefore, a fire alarm system for the PCE shall be provided and tied into the new system, based upon the foregoing, the department has no objection to the above reference.
Right, but the Fire Department lists this as a conditional letter of objection.
In their cover?
Conditional letter of no objection, I'm sorry.
Oh, it does.
Yeah, so-
Is it con- I don't know, how do we tell the difference?
So, I, I was just, oh, Mr. Pitt, and John Daly, Fire Department, for like other past PCEs where the building didn't have a fire alarm system, we did not want to have a fire alarm system in PCE space. In this particular building, they have filed an application to put in a fire alarm system throughout the entire building, so this PCE shall, should have a fire alarm and it tied into the, the new system. That's, so, kind of the conditional, letter of no objection.
Okay, so, will it include the language from the letter in our resolution?
Yes, ma'am.
And I would just note that it's, it's already installed, operational, connected to a central station, we provided photographs of, of that fire alarm system with that submission. Believe this is just a matter of filing-
Correct.
-the correct application once, and when the special permit is approved.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Are there speakers on this? So, I'd like to make a motion, any other comments or anybody, I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Chibetta?
Aye.
And motion to grant on condition of the Fire Department's conditions.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Chibetta?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two, 2019, 204BZ, 2922 Northern Boulevard, Queens. You made a submission. Raise your right hand, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, and to respond honestly to the board member questions?
I do.
The applicant made a submission?
Mm-hmm.
I forwarded it to one, revised plan?
Yeah.
Was it a revised plan, Frank?
Frank Sejoc, Ackerman LLP, for the applicant.
Yeah, I can't open it.
It's revised, you got it?
So, I'll just start, we attended yesterday's review session and resubmitted the public notice posting that was in the building lobby, and then also listening to-
Sorry, you, you have to go slower, because we didn't necessarily see anything, since you posted it, arguably, you submitted it arguably late, so if you submitted something, you have to tell us what you submitted.
Sure, so, we, I resubmitted a submission we made in mid-February, that was evidence of the required PCE legalization posting made in the residential lobby of the building.
So, it was posted, so did somebody see that submission?
Yeah.
So, I understand there's concern that there was not a posting, but there, there was in fact a posting, and it was submitted pursuant to the board's rules.
Okay, and then?
There's also comments with respect to ensuring that there is ADA access to the cellar, and also showing that there's secondary egress from the cellar. I submitted some revised plans this afternoon, I can show you in hard copy what those plans show, but essentially, have the architect label the elevator that's, travels between the ground floor and the cellar, and also on the first floor, show the egress path, the secondary egress path from the cellar, so I'll show you those.
This is my bubble number, sorry. So, that's the ground floor, and I'll show you what it, the initial submission.
And have it labeled elevator.
Right, and then we expanded the footprint, so you can see this-
Oh, good.
-secondary egress, which is not part of the application, but it's, it's shown there now, so you can see there's a clear path out.
Right, good, okay.
And then also, the cellar floor here, which previously didn't show the egress out, through here, that arrow is just extended out.
And Fire Department, I can't open anything, so, somebody see Fire Department?
Fire Department had a letter of no objection.
Okay. Right, Fire Department, you're good?
Right, and I'll just also note, there was a, there is a installed operational fire alarm in this space as well.
Okay. Um, what else? Are there any speakers on this? There's nobody in the audience, as far as we know, we didn't get any letters of objection in terms of the use, so, and someone saw the posting that was for this hearing, right?
Project manager.
Okay, I did too, you did too, okay, good. All right, so then I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Chibetta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Chibetta?
Aye.
Application granted.
Thank you.
Item number three, 2019, 260BZ, 233 East 34th Street, Manhattan.
Such a pretty one, Bonnie Rose.
Oh, that's nice.
Right, are you going to sign?
Yeah.
Sign first, and then. Raise your right hands, you want to raise, you want to speak?
Yeah.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, and to respond honestly to the board member questions? Proceed, please. This, a submission was made this afternoon, or this morning.
This is, these are different?
These are, sorry, this is in response to the board's-
Yeah, there's two segments, the amended plans on the sound attenuation plan, I should have three segments.
I have lots of drawings in my hands.
That's why it's submitted this way.
Good afternoon, Bonnie Rose for the applicant, I was present at yesterday's review session, and I just wanted to respond to the board's comments. In terms of the proof of notice of hearing, we did submit that, it also included an affidavit which detailed the fact that the lobby had been locked, and that the notice was posted to the residential lobby door. We also included photographs of the same, and I have a copy of the notice here, if you would need to see that.
Notice and a photograph that it was posted?
Yeah.
I submitted yesterday, I can't open anything on any of my things, so I don't know. And that's the photograph, okay, can I see that the date was for today?
We also noted the board's comment regarding the sound attenuation plans, they have been keyed in, and you have a copy of the amended existing proposed condition plans with sound attenuation keyed in. However, this morning, uh, this afternoon, excuse me, we noticed an error on page A002 with regard to the numbering and reference to the sound attenuation page, so we updated that and emailed an electronic copy, which is being clocked in, or has been clocked in, I suppose, by now. So, again, what you have in your hand is just a paper copy showing sound attenuation keyed in, but you should have the fully updated copy electronically. So, I believe that, yes, and Chase is aware. Mm-hmm. So, I believe that was all of the board's questions, but if there's anything outstanding-
So, that, we have to figure this out?
Sure.
Because we haven't seen it, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, maybe you could show us how it's keyed in, and, see, our key, acoustic door, STC5, see detail three of the door.
Right, so you can see those details on-
And acoustic partition, see detail one.
Yeah, so you can see the detail on A002, I believe?
A00. No, I'm not looking at the detail, I'm looking at where the keys are, dropped acoustic, isolated ceiling, five, six, seven on five. 7, 8, 9, 10. Okay-ish. Okay. So again, a note to the project manager, these have to, Jellie, these have to be kept together?
No, those are not going to be approved.
They keep giving them to us separately, but they're not...
Those have mistakes on them.
No, I'm taught, the ones that are filed, if they're, again, they're filed with two separate documents, they shouldn't be. They should be filed as one set, right? So if they're not filed as one set, combine them as one set, so that there's the proper set that includes the acoustical for approval.
Got it.
Fire Department had a letter of no objections, that they're not required to have fire suppression or fire alarm? Right? Yes? Uh, okay. Anybody, there are no speakers on this, because I don't see anyone else in the room. Anybody, any other comments?
No.
Okay, so then I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Chivetta?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Just close, that's exciting, but not the full story, okay? And a motion to grant.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Chivetta?
Aye.
Case is ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
Now you can go. Thank you very much.[1714.16]